To fund the EDDA expenses for the balance of 2021. And with that, I'll turn it over to Hillary for a little bit more insight on the actual day-to-day workings of the DDA.
Thanks, Dan. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. We have hit the ground running over in DDA land. Our Board of Directors is very much leaning forward into this work. They feel a sense of urgency to support the short-term economic recovery of downtown business and property owners, as well as to get the DDA positioned as soon as possible to start investing in longer-term downtown projects. The stakeholders in City Center are especially acutely aware of the sense of urgency. One of them told me, "We can't get started soon enough." He doesn't want to see City Center decline. At any rate, things are happening and we're having fun. We have launched marketing tactics. There's a new website, Facebook page, e-newsletter tool, print newsletter, which I believe you have in your packet. We had cleanups along South Broadway and Old Hampden happened this weekend. Gutters were swept, grime was sprayed off of trash cans and bike racks, graffiti was removed. Those little spruce-up things really go a long way to help people feel welcome and comfortable and to stick around a shopping area and spend some money. We are leveraging your investments in downtown through the supplementary budget program with state economic recovery funding that might be available to the DDA through grant programs. The first one is a grant with CDOT that is all about improving pedestrian safety access and multimodal connections to Main Street businesses. So we're focusing on enhancing the two paseos and the crosswalk and working with the Public Works Department, who is pursuing another CDOT grant, to build the mid-block crossing at the Gothic Theater and look at the overhead lighting project on South Broadway. So the two projects are very eligible for this grant funding. They meet all the criteria, and our hope is that it will give sort of the traditional Main Street area in the downtown district some new activity, new livelihood, lighten up some dark areas on the street at night, and greatly improve pedestrian safety regardless of how people are getting around downtown. We're also advocating for patio expansions, alley activations, the things that were allowed during the emergency order. We believe those livened up downtown created a more friendly, welcoming place for consumers and supported local business. That will be more and more important as we move forward, and we're trying to retain local businesses in growing areas. And the other activities right now are working with the Public Works and Parks Department in providing comments and input on the Highway 285 Hampton Project, as well as the Little Dry Creek Enhancement Project.
Thanks, Hillary. So we'll just quickly go through the first of the four items, which is the 2021 EDDA budget, which is really a compliance item with state DDA statute. So on July 6th, council will consider approval by motion of the proposed budget, which was previously approved by the EDDA Board on May 26th. And per the information in your packet, it's a total 2021 budget of $200,000, and that has a supporting operational plan that's part of that backup for that requested budget approval. When we get to the end, Hillary can address any of your questions specific to the budget. Our second specific item is the intergovernmental agreement between the city and the DDA. That was approved by the Board of the DDA at the first meeting, April 28th of this year. A draft of that had been distributed to all department directors with the city for their feedback, and that also included sample IGAs from Castle Rock and Longmont. It's a fairly standard template document that's followed across Colorado, and it basically is a trade-off where the EDDA is performing many duties and tasks, and in exchange, the city is supporting the EDDA through the professional, if you will, advice and services of various departments. So this, again, the first reading of the IGA ordinance is scheduled for July 6th. It is going to require an ordinance, so there'll be two readings, with the second one scheduled for July 19th. Our third item is the Downtown Plan of Development. Council reviewed a draft of this plan, and we had some fairly detailed discussion, you may recall, last summer. And this was a fairly thick document that had been prepared by the Downtown Matters Consulting Team. It had lots of input from the Steering Committee along the way. And so this document that you'll be seeing in a couple of weeks is the revised or final plan of the Downtown Plan. And we are anticipating going to receive approval of the EDDA Board this week. It will go to planning and zoning actually next. They review it and comment on it for council. There's one public hearing, and then council is free to vote on that via resolution. And here's back to Hillary's for some more of the just realities of day-to-day operation.
So the Downtown Plan is based on 12 months of community input all through 2020, even through the pandemic, and according to an e-survey that was circulated for several months, all of that informed the Inglewood Downtown Plan, and the priorities that emerged from that planning effort are these kind of six categories. The idea of creating friendly Main Streets that are safer, more accessible, and easier for people to get around on foot or by wheel, preserving local character and supporting local business, rethinking the sites near transit, particularly in City Center, keeping the area beautiful, clean and neat and safe, building lively gathering places like alley activations and expanded patios, and encouraging connections. One of our big challenges with this downtown district is a lack of cohesion. We have three kind of unique sub-areas that all have a different context and a different identity, but they're not very connected, and it's difficult to get around in a variety of ways. The overarching goal here is to balance new development with quality-of-life improvements. These are projects that the private market will not undertake by itself. That's why you need a special district like the Downtown Development Authority to help enhance those public improvements in the downtown area.
So regarding the Downtown Plan, you may recall that there were three sub-areas, and they are the City Center area, the South Broadway area, and the Medical District area. As part of the final version of the plan, you'll see that the Medical District will be renamed as the Wellness District, basically more representative of everything that is happening in that area. So within each of the three sub-areas, there are two potential TIF sub-districts or areas, and one is a sales tax TIF and the other one is a property tax TIF. So with the three areas and two potential TIF districts per area, there's a total of six potential property and sales TIF districts. And we'll get into the detail of this momentarily. But as Hillary said, the key is finding the right balance. We don't want to turn on or activate the TIF sub-districts too early, because if they are, then we lose a lot of long-term financial leverage. But if we don't turn them on early enough, then there isn't workable funding for the goals of the DDA, and that includes operational funding for their annual expenses. So it's trying to find the right balance point. And I think what we have done through our team's collective research, and let me refer you to the three areas here, what we have done, these are the three sub-areas in the original draft of the plan. And so what we've been doing is studying these, and will, as part of the Downtown Plan of Development Recommendation to Council, probably recommend that three of the total six TIF districts be activated by council, and it'll include the property TIF area in the Medical District. Then it looks likely that the recommendation will be the sales tax TIF in that district as well, as well as the sales tax TIF for South Broadway. And I'll just clarify that ballot measure B last year, which passed, actually authorized the EDDA to collect and spend TIF. That was a voter-authorized measure, but the actual TIF activation still needs to occur by approval of the Downtown Plan by council, as well as the EDDA Board. So you'll be seeing that in the weeks ahead. One of the things that we're also working at is balancing, as we've done this analysis, we found that we really need to make a refinement to the sub-district boundaries. And so what is being proposed in the final plan is to move Inglewood Plaza and Inglewood Marketplace, which are the two big older, single-story retail centers between City Center and South Broadway, to move those into the City Center area, basically so that they don't pull down the TIF revenue that's available earlier on to the other two districts. Other than to balance that out, it looks like the recommendation will be to move the line from Downing or from Logan to Sherman to the east there. I'm sorry, let me restate that, from Sherman to Logan. And that'll help balance out the South Broadway area with more retail and corresponding space. So these two revisions will be part of the final plan that's recommended to council. And you see these boundary changes here. And then our fourth item is the Downtown Debt Authorization Ballot Measure, which is item four. And this will be recommended to council for voter approval this year. So it'd be recommended for council's consideration to put back on the EDDA ballot in November. We've talked a lot about how it relates to future bond issuance, but it really is much more than that, because the debt authorization is needed to authorize the EDDA to enter into multi-year fiscal obligations in addition to issuing future TIF-backed bonds. This is a measure that lost by nine votes last year, and it was a tough, you know, it was a tough ask of voters. We had four very complex ballot questions on the ballot. We got a yes vote on two of those, and then came close on this one. So I think the recommendation from the EDDA Board that they'll be voting on this week is for council to consider putting that back on the ballot again. Again, it would just be for the 1,500 or so qualified electors in the EDDA area, no one beyond that. And voter debt authorization is really a key to unlocking the maximum potential of the DDA in general. So I'll just mention that ballot measure B, which passed last year by one vote, authorized the EDDA to collect and spend TIF. But again, the vote on the Downtown Plan is needed to really activate the day-to-day TIF collection within each of the specific TIF sub-districts identified in the final version of the Downtown Plan. And I think there's this other key, that the debt authorization is really needed for the DDA to be able to enter into multi-year fiscal obligations, such as service contracts and also improvement projects that would take longer than one year to complete. So without this authorization, the EDDA would be really hamstrung in a number of ways. The additional benefit is that it's, in essence, a pre-authorization for the EDDA to issue bonds at a date in the future. Something that, you know, we stressed last year, but perhaps not enough, is that the EDDA bonds, if and when they are approved by council, would not raise property taxes for anyone or sales taxes for anyone. They would not impact the city's debt rating. They would not increase the financial risks for residents, either inside or outside the DDA boundaries. So again, voter authorization is really needed to put the EDDA in an operating position as far as its daily management functions. Here is the current version of the outreach information slide that's being used as we talk about tax increment financing. I won't spend a lot of time on this. It's, you know, it is a complicated issue to try and talk through. I think the basic reality of it is that the incremental sales and property tax revenues, most of which is created through the actual success of the DDA operating over its 30-year timeframe, that's what they get to use. So if they're successful, they drive up the amount of increment that's generated, and they get to reinvest that in downtown. We think one of the benefits for the city is that, in addition to the strong focus on downtown, it will allow the city, over time, to take some dollars that are otherwise needed downtown and invest them throughout the rest of the city. One of the other important things, I think, to recognize is the base tax revenue does actually grow as it relates to property taxes. And so the base inventory that exists at the establishment of the base year, as that value increases, the taxing entities that receive that continue to receive those increases. So it's just really the increment that's created through new development. And we'll continue to talk a lot about this, because just making it clear is a true, true challenge. Hillary's been extremely helpful on that, is some of the outreach communications, people really start to get it, you know, when they see this kind of graphic.
Dan, can you walk us through the, what is the green section? Maybe just a little more detail on the color.
That's a great point, Sean, really. And then one of the big benefits of this whole program is at the end of the 30-year window, this tax increment, the total property and sales taxes that have been grown during this three-year period, then come back to the taxing entities. So the trade-off is at that point, they should receive a much bigger tax base to deal with than they would have if there was no DDA and no DDA receiving tax increment and investing in downtown. So that's typically thought as the real win-win for the entities that are participating in it. And then I'll just take us back to this consideration. You may remember last year, we had a lot of discussion about what is the right amount of debt authorization to put into the ordinance and to the ballot. You may remember last year, we talked about a range that went between 40 and 150 million, and we settled, I should say you did, on 80 million. And based on voter familiarity with this number, we're again recommending that that be the number that's used in the ordinance and in the ballot question. The ordinance and ballot language would again include a Tabor-required, fully-loaded number, and that was $216.5 million last year. This is based on the maximum interest rate expected over the entire 30-year period, assuming the entire amount of debt was outstanding from day one. So it's essentially the worst case ever possible that's required under Tabor to be stated. So again, we think that number should be about the same this year, although we're working with the Finance Department to recheck all of the assumptions that go into that. And then I'll just mention that, as we did last year, we again put together a menu of potential illustrative projects. I'll let Hillary talk about some of those.
Yeah, so these are some of the priorities of the Board, as reflected in the Inglewood Downtown Plan. They're all pretty expensive. They're all pretty time-consuming, meaning that it will take multiple years to implement any one of these. But it really, again, looks at investments both in private development, where the market itself won't be enough, and public investments in quality-of-life projects. So for example, streetscape improvements, pedestrian safety, and multimodal are going to be increasingly important on Old Hampden. We have 10 residential development projects in the pipeline today along that street. We need to make sure that everybody's able to utilize the sidewalks safely and get around it in whatever way that they choose. The street trees along Hampden and South Broadway, many of them are going to die in the near future because they're ash trees, and if they're not already sick now. So we've learned from the Parks Department that we need to start talking about an urban canopy and street tree program for both of those streets. Inglewood Parkway needs to be enhanced to make it more multimodal, safe, and connected to the rest of downtown to help prompt new development in the City Center area. So you see how these things start to kind of work together. But again, the main point here is that these are the kind of projects that the private market will not undertake by itself. They're either too expensive or they're too big, and that's why we need to have debt authorization and the ability to invest over the long term in the downtown area.
Thanks, Hillary. And then you may remember, this table was also one that we discussed last year, and it's been updated. And it basically shows how the $80 million total authorization is allocated over time. In this case, it's allocated over what's anticipated to be six different bond issues. And, you know, it's important to remember that no bond issue can ever be issued unless there's enough revenue in place for it to be underwritten by the investment community. And so, you know, the only time that City Council would ever be asked to consider a bond issue is when the necessary incremental revenue was there to support it. In this case, the individual bond issues are, generally speaking, sized between 5 and $35 million. So it just gives you an example how, again, the $80 million number and the debt authorization are a pre-approval. Again, we've called it a pre-preapproval, because we're just basically asking the DDA voters for this upfront authorization for this amount of debt. Then as we go, you know, into the future together, City Council will be asked for the authorization to issue each individual debt bond issue, and they'll also be asked for authorization of each recipient of those bond proceeds. So there's a lot of control along the way, and the upfront authorization by the voters is really necessary to be positioned to respond to opportunities that come along. Because if we have to go through, you know, an authorization of debt at the time that something comes up that everyone's excited about and is a unique opportunity, it'll just take too long. So what we've done here is just tried to summarize kind of the do-nothing scenario, what that offers as opposed to the scenario of just going ahead, as you did last year, and putting the question on the ballot and letting the specific DDA-qualified electors decide. And just in terms of what's coming up, you really see that three of the measures have the same dates coming up for council action that we've talked about here, the DDA budget, the IGA, and then the debt authorization issue. All of those get teed up on July 6th. A couple of those have second readings on July 19th. And then the Downtown Plan will be back to you at a slightly later date, depending on the time that it takes the Planning Commission to review it and issue their com- the time that it takes the Planning Commission to, to review it and issue their comments and the recommendations. So with that, our team would be happy to jump into any questions and discussion. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Perumba and Ms. Portell for the presentation. And just for council and for members of the public, we actually do have other members present here tonight that could take questions as well. So we have a legal counsel for the EDDA, Hillary Graham, Mark Tompkins with Stray Advisory Service. We have the treasurer of the EDDA, Mr. Brad Nixon here as well, and the vice chair of the EDDA, Mr. Blake Calvert. So all available for questions. So any questions from council? Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Thank you for the presentation, Ms. Portell and Mr. Perumba. The first question I have is regarding the boundary change. When we appointed board members, we were aiming to have two in each different area. Does those boundary, does the boundary change affect whether or not we have two representatives from each of the different districts?
I, I don't believe it does. The one that was still uncertain there is Amy Gallegos, because her move into the, you know, the medical district is, is, remains uncertain, but she certainly has a lot of expertise in both of those sub areas. So I think we're basically in the same position that you all wanted us to be.
Good. I have more questions, but if other council members.
Any questions for other members of council? If not, go ahead, Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you. The second question was, I wanted, I think you said that you wanted to start with the medical district for the first TIF activation. What, can you explain the reasoning behind that? Is there a potential project you would want to bond for, or is that just operating revenue for the DDA? What are we looking at down the road on that?
Primarily operating revenue. And of all the six possibilities in terms of TIF sub-districts, it's the best position to generate real revenues for the EDDA the soonest. And the receipt of those revenues by the EDDA will be primarily for operating expenses. And so we'll minimize the extent to which the city would have to invest additional advancement of those funds to the DDA. And then it'll also, beyond the actual operating expenses, there's a significant amount that should be available for some meaningful direct investment in what we would refer to as smaller projects.
To follow up on that, you, I think you said that we would want to activate the property tax TIF first and then the sales tax TIF also in the same district next?
We would, we would propose in the Downtown Plan to activate three sub-districts together upfront. And that would also include the sales tax TIF in the medical district. And the feel, the feeling there is that there are a number of opportunities to see those sales taxes bump up pretty significantly in early years. Even, even the sales tax that's generated by, by Swedish, for example, as their elective surgeries go up and their sale of products goes up, we, we think there'll be some significant revenue generated for the EDDA through that.
And as soon as we activate those TIFs, that starts that, that 30-year clock, but we don't, we don't, that doesn't particularly mean we're going out for bonds for those particular areas?
No, it just starts the time clock against the time period that we can go out for bonds.
Okay. And then those, and the final question on this, is those revenues generated for projects, if, if the money is coming from the medical district, can you or would you spend that money on projects outside of the medical district? Or would you stick to projects within, within the district if you were going to do that?
I think there's, there's a general intention that, to try and tie it to uses inside the medical district, but there's also language in the Downtown Development Plan that would allow those funds to be expended in the other sub-areas, as long as there's a nexus, as long as we can show that the, the improvements that are being funded would have a positive impact on the medical district as well. And we've used, for example, the Inglewood Trolley as one of those items that it would be pretty easy to show, you know, investment in that would really benefit the medical district.
Okay.
I, I would just add that one of the things that makes the board kind of lean forward in this, in this discussion is that when we turn on a TIF increment clock, it doesn't mean that revenue is instantly flowing into the DDA's bank account. The, the tax revenues must go to the city first and hit that base level as agreed upon before the DDA gets any additional increment. So the DDA gets whatever is generated in each TIF district that's due to new consumer sales, new development, new businesses moving into the area, things like that. But it'll take a year or more before that base is hit. So even if we turn the faucet on today, there's no money to invest in, in the DDA or downtown projects for another year and a half. And that's why we start to feel like we, we, we need to keep pushing forward because every year we lose is another year and a half that, that no revenue is, is coming in.
Can I, can I ask a question, another question on how that works? Is, I don't know, maybe you have other council members?
I don't see any other questions. Go ahead and put the follow-up.
All right. Well, so you just gave me a couple more questions to ask. So if you, if you activate that, that district, how do you, do you wait until, like, if it takes, you know, 11 and a half months to hit the, the amount of revenue that's established as a baseline, then do you get what happened? Like, I'm not sure, does it go year by year in terms of the total revenue and so you don't get the money until the back part of the year? Or does it carry over into the next year?
Yeah, the DDA does not receive any increment until the, the base is collected by the City of Inglewood every year.
Okay. So that's usually in the latter part of the year that the money would be generated then?
Yep.
And then the, the other question is on the property tax revenue, is that just the city's portion of the property tax? Or is there discussions with the, with the school about, school boards about the, the property tax there or the county? I know there's other potential portions, portions of revenue there. How, are you moving forward on that too?
We're anticipating meetings with both the county and the school district to talk about, you know, generally the benefits of TIF for them beyond, beyond the revenue side. And our plan is to basically initiate those conversations before council's consideration of the debt authorization. So we'll have that feedback for you. You know, I will just remind you, under, under state statute, there's not an obligation to talk to those entities or for them to actually approve the TIF approach. But certainly from a good neighbor policy, I mean, our plan is to have them largely involved in the discussion.
Yeah. Okay. Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Member Russell?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Thank you for the presentation this evening. I have a couple of questions. So what date does the baseline start and what is the baseline?
You know, what I'd like to do is turn that over to our base year expert, Mark Tompkins. And there's, it's, because there's a couple of different answers to that, depending on whether it's sales or property tax. Mark?
Good evening, everyone. Councilperson Russell, I think there's two, as Dan said, there are two answers to that question. It depends on the type of tax increment that we're talking about. If we're talking about sales tax increment, then statute requires that when, when council takes action and establishes a sales tax increment area, then the previous 12 months is looked at as that look-back period, and that is the statutory base for sales tax increment. For property taxes, same general approach applies, but because of the assessment process in Colorado, the mechanics are a bit different. So when council establishes a property tax increment area, then the county assessor will certify the base assessed values as of the last certified value date. Okay? And so in this particular moment in time, if we were to start a property tax increment area in August of 2021, then council would take action, they would notify the assessor that a property tax increment area has been set up. The Arapahoe County Assessor would then look at the boundaries of that tax increment area and they would assemble all the parcel data inside of it. And then they would go to the last certified values for all of those properties, which would have been December 1, on or about December 1 of 2020, which would be the property values in that area as of January 1, 2020. So it's, it's the 2020 tax year that they would look at. And of course, the assessor does their work all throughout the year and they finalize their work in December of every year.
Okay. Thank you very much for the answer to that question. Also, I have a couple more questions. Will, and this may be for Mr. Perumba, will this election be part of the coordinated election
It will be a standalone election. The EDDA will have its own certified election official who'll be responsible for communicating with qualified electors, sending out ballots, receiving the various forms that they need in some cases to file to receive ballots. It'll happen on the same date, I believe it's November 2nd, but it will be, again, largely a standalone effort focused on the qualified electors within the DVA. And let me, let me just add one thing to what Mark said. If I understand this correctly, and, and there was a lot of concern last year about the, making sure that the city did not get penalized by the establishment of the base year for any of the TIF districts as it related to COVID. In other words, not to set a base at a low value that was created because of the COVID impacts. And if I understand it correctly, on the property tax side, one of the benefits of the state's assessment approach every other year is that the values will be established as of essentially the 2019, which was kind of the high, high mark, high value mark and at least in the commercial market. So there's kind of a natural protection that meets what council's stated objections were or concerns were last year.
Thank you. And then I just have one other question. I know that you just stated that you intend, and it's in the paperwork also, to meet with the school district and the county, but you don't have to. But I felt like council was given an assurance that you would do that.
Yeah, that's, that is our, our intention, our plan. I think, you know, we felt like until recently, we, we really didn't have an operational EDDA. So we wanted to make sure that we had all those boxes checked and that we knew their position on the debt authorization as well as the Downtown Plan. And you have to remember that they're actually voting on two of those items this week. So as we sit here tonight, I can't even actually tell you 100% what their position is. I, I think we have a sense of where it'll be. So I think as of Wednesday of this week, we'll have a, you know, an official position of the DDA to actually go forward and have those conversations meaningfully with those two, with those two entities.
Thank you. And I also noted in the packet that staff and the EDDA board will be meeting, or the plan is for them to meet with school board and the county. Is it possible that council can be included in any of those meetings?
I'm sure we're open to it. I think one of the things we've talked about, actually talked about it today, was having some one-on-one meetings with city council members to get their feedback as to relationships that they have with both the school district and the county that could be useful for these kind of introductory strategic discussions. And I could see that then involving those particular council members in those meetings.
Actually, I just would like to make a comment on that. This council is obligated to the constituents in this city. And we should not be having one-on-one meetings with people individually where decisions are being discussed. It needs to be done openly in front of the public with all council members present so we can hear what other council members ask.
Of course. That wasn't the intention of my answer. It was basically to ask individual council members about their thoughts on their relationships with both the county and the school board that then might be helpful for determining the best way to approach them and have those conversations. It wasn't to imply that there'd be any decisions.
And I wasn't suggesting that, but I was just reminding us and council that we represent the constituents.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, Member Russell. City Manager Lewis?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. And just to reiterate, we actually have had some conversations. I have a quarterly meeting with the superintendent of schools as well as the commissioners' court administrative personnel and more frequently than that. And we have discussed tax increment financing between, at the executive level. And as Dan stated, we have not had, you know, finalization on any decisions regarding TIF in order to really start those conversations in earnest with the county. And we absolutely have not and will not be having discussions one-on-one with council members that, where decisions would be made. So thank you for the reminder.
Thank you. And can I just ask another question? So I apologize, it went as fast as it came. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Russell. I'll ask a question if it comes back to you, just put on your buzzer. So my question is regarding the, the debt authorization. So it was one of two that were rejected by the voters of the boundaries within the EDDA. The other one that was rejected, I believe, was the Mill Libby increase, correct? So the only thing that you're asking for from council coming up next month would be just the debt authorization of $80 million, correct?
Correct. Just the single ballot question this year.
And so then, it also sounds like that's going to be coming in front of the EDDA board to vote on that $80 million authorization this coming Wednesday. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes, that'll be part of their recommendation to city council.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Perumba. Member Ward?
Just one question. Can you elaborate on the impetus for renaming the medical district the Wellness District?
I think I'll, I'll let our marketing genius take care of that one.
Yeah, one of the, one of the recommendations in the Downtown Plan was to market the medical district as a place for wellness and healthy living. And it was reflective of the mix of uses that are evolving in that area. It's not just medical uses, it's healthcare in general, it's personal, personal services, holistic health. We've got the residential developers who are trying to market the area as a place to live. And so it's, it's not just a medical campus per se, it's really a growing mixed-use neighborhood.
And I, I would just add to that, you know, one of, one of our challenges has been that the hospitals are our largest employers, have been largely isolated over there, if you will, for many, many years. So we are really trying to draw them out of their shells and into the EDDA collaboration. You know, Craig is on the, on the board, Swedish is very involved, they endorsed their participation and support financially. So we've made great headway with them. We had a long meeting this afternoon with Craig on things that they are planning to do with their campus and how those things interface with the DDA plans. And there are conflicts in some ways, but they're very open to collaborating and trying to find, you know, win-win answers. And so I think that's part of the whole wellness aspect too, and I think they feel good about that label as well.
I might be the only person that it strikes in this way, but I wonder if EDDA might consider other naming options. Having one area in the city designated as the Wellness District is, in my opinion, something that implies that the other areas of the city might be unwell. So I'm not particularly fond of that rebrand. I'll just leave that. I'll just leave that out.
Thank you, Member Ward and Member Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor Protim. I don't know if we were, if you were seeking any direction tonight, but I did want to weigh in on the $80 million. I would, I'm hesitant to go back to the voters for the same ask that they voted against last time, and wonder if it wouldn't be prudent to dial that back just a little, 60 or 70 million or something like that. Then you could, and not just as, you know, not just on the financial side, but on the promotion side. If you're talking to the same people who voted last time, and you're saying, here we are again with the same thing you voted down last time. If you could come back to them and say, hey, $80 million was a big ask. We get it. We think we can do a lot with, you know, 65 or 70 million. Would you be willing to do? That way, you're taking the feedback of the voters into consideration rather than... I've always been bothered when the tendency to bring something before the voters again and just wear them down. I don't think that's kind of, that's what it feels like we're headed towards here. And I think we might get a better result if we take their feedback into consideration and dial that back a little bit. So I would just weigh in on that before it comes back to us. I know you guys are going to vote on it, but maybe consider lowering that number a little bit.
You know, I would just respond that I could certainly see the symbolic value of that. And as being responsive to the voters, I mean, from our team's perspective, we feel like we had such a heavy lift last year trying to get voters educated on all four measures. So we certainly can take that under advisement. And my only question would be whether we, how we can factor that in, timing-wise, into the ordinance that you'll be seeing. So subject to that, I think we'll give a lot of consideration to that kind of adjustment.
Thank you, Member Anderson. Any other questions from council? Well, thank you very much for the presentation tonight, Mr. Perumba and Ms. Portell. It's great to see you in human form, finally, after the last 13 months of discussing everything online. So I appreciate everybody in attendance tonight from the EDDA and everybody that's been involved. So I appreciate all the work you've done thus far. Thank you very much. Next item up, I, we are moving into the budget request discussion. Director of Finance Jackie Lowe and members of her leadership team will be here to discuss their preliminary 2022 budget requests. And we have set aside quite a bit of time for this.
Mayor Protim, as Jackie is making her way to the microphone. Just a reminder, this is a continuation of our budget workshop that we started last week. And so we will have the remaining departments that presented last week. The ones that didn't present last week that will be finishing this up for us tonight. And I think we're a little bit ahead of schedule already. So you'll have to brag to the mayor about that.
No, we're not going to be setting the, no, no. We're sticking to our schedule in terms of how much time we have allotted, so. But Director Lowe, thank you very much for being here tonight. I'll let you begin when you are ready.
Good evening, Mayor Protim and council. We just want to continue the 2022 proposed operating budget presentation tonight. So last Monday, several department's directors presented their budget needs, including administration, municipal court, human resources, information technology, community development, communications, and the police. And tonight, the rest of the directors will present their budget needs, including city attorney's office, finance, public works, parks, recs, library, golf, utilities, and south plat renewal. And the first presenter is... Okay, let me change.
Mayor Protim and council, of course, I'm... I will scoot closer to my microphone physically. Of course, I'm Tamara Niles, the city attorney, and I am first up to present the budget. Well, this doesn't bode well for my presentation.
No, we're having a little bit of difficulties to start. Let's see if we can get that PowerPoint back up.
Could just wing it.
No problem. Of course, this is my, today was my, started my third week on the job. So I didn't have a lot of historical perspective in preparing this budget presentation. So this presentation was due in less than a week when I started. So I spent the time working with Budget. Jenny Nolan in Budget was an amazing resource to give me some historical perspective. And I'm not really requesting anything new or any changes from the prior budget. One thing we did discover in budgeting is the city attorney's budget includes outside legal counsel. In the past, outside legal counsel for employment issues had been budgeted through human resources. But apparently, last year, that was taken out of human resources. But the city attorney budget for outside counsel was not increased accordingly. So that, we'll probably have a budget reconciliation at some point regarding that. But so that's really the only big change in my budget from last year is to account for that employment outside legal counsel budget. Looks like we're almost up and running. It is our goal in the city attorney's office to provide high-quality legal services to the city, including the city council, departments, boards, and commissions, and of course, appointed officials. Another one of our goals is to provide legal services in efficient and cost-effective manner through appropriate staffing and to ensure appropriate prosecution in municipal court during the city prosecutor's paid time off. So that is another enhancement. Our city prosecutor has worked at the city for a significant amount of time and therefore is entitled to an additional week of paid time off, starting in 2022. So our budget enhancement accounts for that as well. As far as the personnel and operation enhancements, this was the line item for employment matters. It was previously a $60,000 line item in the human resources budget, which was taken out of the human resources budget. So we're proposing to add that same amount into the city attorney outside legal expense budget, plus an additional 10% to account for annual increases in rates. If anyone's hired an attorney every year, usually their rates go up a little bit every year. So we want to make sure we budget for that accordingly. The original budget for outside legal expense was $100,000. And so we would also request that be increased by 10% to account for annual increases. Hopefully, we wouldn't have to use that, but I would, I'm expecting an increase in rates. So I would like to account for that. And I referenced the additional temporary wages to pay for a city prosecutor to fill in during the city prosecutor's scheduled paid time off. So with all the costs, we think that's an additional $6,000. I think we, I think we're a slide too far. There we are. And also, in the past, we've had a part-time employee budget for summer legal interns. This is somebody that's cost-effective for us to be able to save up some legal projects from different departments and then hire someone at a part-time, significantly reduced rate in the summer. So we would request $10,000 be in our budget for that this year. And we have had that in the past. That the legal intern would be the only additional staffing we would request. And the rationale is because legal interns do provide cost-effective legal research and legal sources for the city to utilize. And it also provides an educational opportunity for someone in law school and a resume enhancement. So it's a symbiotic relationship. It helps us, it helps them, and it gives back to the community in that way. But we also get a significant benefit. As far as the operational cost requests, and the outside legal services, again, from the human resources budget to the city attorney budget, anticipated increases in outside legal services, and then the temporary prosecuting attorney to cover for that additional week of vacation. We have no proposed fee or rate increases. And the alignment with the strategic plan, mostly governance, but with the backup prosecutor also attributable to safety in the community. We have no capital requests. And with that, I would welcome any questions.
Thank you, Madam Attorney. Any questions from city council or the city attorney's office? I do have a question, if there's no questions at the moment. I guess, have we considered increasing, in the event that we may have increases in potential litigation against the city, have we looked at potentially upping up the risk that we may see for something like that in terms of just coverage? Or has that been taken into consideration?
That is actually a different budget line item. Direct claims against the city are considered part of the insurance pool through risk management. Of course, we have insurance coverage for claims against the city through SIRS, our insurance provider. And so the outside legal counsel budget, for example, when the interim city attorney firm was hired, that, the money to pay for those invoices were for outside legal counsel. Employment law, if we have employment questions, if we don't have the expertise on staff, then we retain that outside legal counsel to address those legal issues. If we should have maybe an employee complaint that requires an internal investigation, we would oversee the hiring of outside legal counsel to do that so that we don't create a conflict of interest. That's what that pool is for, not for, generally not for direct claims against the city.
Thank you so much. Any questions? Thank you. I'm sorry, Member Ward.
Just a comment. I love the legal intern program. I think it's great. I've worked with a number of legal interns over the course of my career. Very, very handy. So I support that.
Thank you.
Thank you, City Attorney Niles, for your presentation. And Director Lowe, next up.
Okay. So I will present the proposed 2022 budget for the finance department. Want to make statement, we do not have great aspirations for 2022, but we do have two goals, small goals we want to accomplish, which would take quite a few steps. Before I start my presentation, want to give you an overview of the finance department. The finance department consists of four divisions, accounting, budget, revenue, and procurement. In addition to handling the day-to-day activities and providing basic technical support to other departments, the finance team also is, are responsible for financial management, such as public financing and the project management, including internal process improvement and interdepartmental project support. These are true additive value the finance team provide to the city team. So in order to achieve these two goals, we want to first reposition the finance department as financial advisor and project partner to other city departments. The second, want to ensure the city is in compliance with the governmental accounting standards board, we call GASP, accounting principles, and auditing procedures. How can we create a capacity in the finance department to support organization-wide financial activities and interdepartmental projects? And also, we have to provide assistance in increased volume of citywide financing grants and capital projects transactions. Here are a few things for you to consider. 137 million financing project for water and sewer project. 37 million financing project for the stormwater project. Two refunding project for the current outstanding debt. Administering 8.7 million federal grant from the American Rescue Plan Act. And also, we need to help with administrating the recently approved one-time capital improvement project. And pretty soon, within a month, we are going to present to you the 2022 capital improvement project. Think about how many engineers we need for all the capital projects and how many accountants we need to administer those projects. Regarding the GASP 87, this is just a lease, new standard we have to implement for the entire city. What does this standard do is we are going to convert all the operating lease into capital lease. For example, our operating lease for cars and copier need to be put on our balance sheet. So this is an organization-wide project. And how are we going to accomplish these tax? We need to add probably two personnel. One is just entry-level staff accountants. We want to have a budget financial analyst to support financial analysis for the whole city. We are not just looking back at historical data. We want to look forward to make a difference. And also, we want to hire accounting firm to support the year-end audit. Also, the same firm will help us to implement GASP 87. We want to retain Stifel for any financial advisory services and want to adjust the wage compression adjustment to create a higher level for the sales use tax position and want to create some training videos. So we can see the running total for the ongoing expenditures and a one-time. And I want to give you more reason why we want to create these two positions. These two positions are wearing multiple hats, supporting multiple divisions. We want to have the staff accountant to support the reconciliation, very basic accounting function for citywide project grants and the sales use tax. Also, help with year-end financial report preparation and provide additional day-to-day technical support for all departments. And a budget and financial analyst will spend probably 90% of time as a backup for the current budget administrator. This person does not have any backup at this juncture. And also, we want this person to provide 10% of the time to centralize all the financial reporting for the sales use tax and for accounting department. And these two positions can be easily funded by grants, by additional sales use taxes we receive because we give the supervisor more time to do the audit and to do more forecasting. And also, we can find savings from refinancing. These operational costs, why do we want to? The GASP 87 is a requirement for compliance. Why do we want to hire accounting firm to support the year-end audit? First, there are several standalone reports that can be done by a separate entity and can free our current staff with more capacity to support other departments. We're thinking to outsource a pension audit and a single audit. Single audit applies to every organization that receives federal funding more than $750,000. But we don't want to outsource the preparation of our financial statements because we've been receiving the certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting award for 37 years. We don't, we want to keep the tradition. We will continue winning the award. So we don't want to outsource this part. But some other standalone project, definitely we'll want to. The second thing is, I feel we are in the digital era. We, I want to have the audit firm to help the staff to use artificial intelligence to automate any mundane necessary tasks. There are a lot of things can be done by artificial intelligence, but we're still doing this manually. Just hopefully, we can get some outside perspective to help us to become more efficient. That video training, we probably need $10,000 on wage compression. Definitely, we'll want to compensate our staff properly for their contributions. The next slide is very exciting. One thing good about working in finance is we are also responsible for revenue. There are a couple changes to the revenue we want you to consider. First, licensing, license fees increase. We're thinking to adjust some license fees, including the late filing. We estimate we can receive additional $70,000 to $100,000. And marijuana sales tax, currently, we charge 10%. We are not planning to increase the marijuana sales tax because competition. Sheridan is charging 5%, and Littleton is charging 3%. We don't want to lose our biggest retailer. Then, if you remember, universal business license, the amnesty will expire on July 1st. After that, definitely, we want to enforce the universal business licensing. We are expecting to receive additional $100,000. Then business occupational tax, I'm just, I just put it here for your consideration if council member are ready to revisit this topic. And we're also considering additional sales tax for alley maintenance. We're doing some financial analysis to see the cost-benefit analysis, if that's worth to consider. We're doing some financial analysis to see the cost-benefit analysis, if that's worth to, to consider. Of all the enhanced services, I would say mostly for governance in terms of our strategic alignment. We definitely, with financing, with some reconciliation for grants, we could help with infrastructure support. At this juncture, we are not seeking additional capital requests. Do you have any questions about our presentation?
Thank you, Director Lowe. Any questions from Council? No questions. So, Director Lowe, thank you very much for your presentation on finance. Next up will be Public Works and Director DeAndre to present an overview of her budget.
Good evening, City Council. So, generally, the goals for the projects that you'll see tonight are the additional services that we're requesting. Focus on operational efficiency, our continued efforts at asset management, as well as efforts to retain staff and maintain the quality of our professional staff. So, we do have items in each of these categories to talk about. The first item there, we do have several professional staff who will be obtaining their professional engineering license and/or moving into a greater area of responsibility. So, that's what those salary adjustments would be targeted towards. We are also looking at some additional traffic division resources. If you recall, we talked about this last year and added some additional funds to the budget last year to kind of get us by as we could do some more analysis. Unfortunately, we're still in the process of evaluating the traffic division and exactly what type of resources we need. So, we're in that process right now, but we have put a placeholder in there. As you can see, for ongoing costs, that might be an additional staff resource or it might just be outside contracting services to pick up the difference between what the traffic division is doing currently and what is needed to fully complete all of our work within the traffic division, focusing on preventative maintenance of our signals, our striping, and our signage. We are also adding one part-time person within the Streets Division. This is focused primarily in the summertime for assistance with street sweeping, pothole patching, that sort of thing, where really our workload is the heaviest. We are also requesting some equipment for surveying, as well as upgrading our four tandem trucks. Right now, those are single axle, meaning that they carry about, they can have a capacity of about five cubic yards. And by going to a tandem-sized dump truck, we can actually increase that to roughly ten to twelve cubic yards. So, it's much more efficient in terms of how we move material around the city. When we plow, we can put that much more of the ice slicer in the back, meaning we don't have to go back to the, to the service center as often. And so, it really does become an efficiency thing for staff. Then, we are going to be starting, we'd like to start a traffic count program. Right now, we do this, we get traffic counts on sort of a request basis from either staff or typically, more typically, through a request from citizens. And so, what we'd like to do is start to get a baseline of traffic counts at specific locations around the city, going on a three-year program, so that we can say, we can watch those both speed and volumes change over time. So, instead of saying, well, is this a one-off? Is this different? Is it new? We want to start to establish that baseline at certain locations. And finally, doing some records conversion. So, a lot of our documents, especially our, our maps, our drawings for the various city facilities are in paper copy. And so, if there was to be an emergency, those could be destroyed if this building was destroyed. And so, we want to put those in electronic format. And so, we put some money one-time in there to cover that. And then, specific to the stormwater program, we are looking to replace our vac truck. This is the vehicle that we take around to clean out the inlets and the ends of the storm sewer system. So, this has gotten a lot more use in the last year and a half, as we've been doing that program more extensively. And the difference that you see there, the seventy-seven thousand nine hundred dollars, we have been putting money aside in the SURF program for that vehicle, but it's more than what has been put there. As we've talked about before, this is a problem with our SURF, that we're trying to right-size that, make sure that we're putting enough away each year. But really, there, the difference between the estimated cost of the replacement unit of two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars is that difference. So, we've collected roughly a hundred and seventy-four thousand right now. So, this is to make up that difference. And then, finally, looking at the stormwater impervious study. So, we calculate commercial and industrial properties based on the amount of impervious surface within their facility. Residential areas is the same unit rate for stormwater, but commercial and industrial can vary widely. And so, we wanted to study that and make sure that people are paying the correct fees, not too much and not too little, based on the amount of impervious surface within their, their property boundaries. So, that would cover that on a one-time basis. So, again, this just goes into more detail. I'll just, again, highlight there the second line about the additional resources for the traffic division, is that we're still in analyzing that. And within, hopefully, the next month or so, we'll have more specific direction on that. But we have put the placeholder in terms of the dollar amount. And I think we've touched on all of this. Yeah, and there's the, the dollar amount difference. That paragraph there of text just talks about the difference between the estimated cost of the new vac truck versus what we've collected to date within the SURF fund. We aren't proposing two rate increases, one for the stormwater rates. So, this was laid out in our 2019 stormwater rate analysis. So, this is intended and was planned for another rate increase for beginning January twenty-twenty-two. So, the estimated amount, as well as the estimated projected increase in revenue is listed there. Then, we're also recommending that we increase our, the amount that we charge for developers. Sometimes, they'll call for weekend or after-hours work to come and do an inspection. And so, we just charge them flat, a flat or, or standard rate. So, we are asking that those, that they, the rate for those time periods be increased slightly and that that cost would be passed on to the developers when they make those requests that are outside of business hours. So, this just shows those various enhancements. They do kind of range within those various elements of the strategic plan, but are very much focused on infrastructure and safety and transportation. Those are our three primary focus points. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Director DeAndre. Any questions from Council? Actually, I do have a question. Actually, it doesn't just pertain to you, Director, but in terms of the FTE and the, I noticed that you had a line item for salary increases potentially due to market conditions. How are we taking into account some of the supply shortages that are going into effect right now that many, many companies are seeing right now? Are we taking that into account with the FTE cost that we're showing today? Or is that just like a, you know, number that we had from last year?
Yeah, I think that's a good question. We could probably follow up as an organization on that. But yes, we're seeing, obviously, high demand for engineers. And so, we want to retain our qualified staff, and that's the reason for the line item for us. But I think we could probably get back on a more of a citywide basis of how we're addressing that.
Thank you, Director. I don't see any further questions. Thank you very much, Director DeAndre, for your presentation. I'm sure we'll be seeing you more, more of you tonight, so. Next up is Director Underhill with Parks and Rec. A popular topic. Good evening.
There we go. As you know, we focus very highly on quality of life for our community. So, as we go through this, I'll highlight what we're discussing. So, there's some different positions we're looking forward to enhance what we do as a department. The first one is the Assistant City Forester. This is partially being requested due to the Emerald Ash Bore that's coming through the front range, and we want to stay ahead of it. We believe this position would not only help our parks, but also our community members. As I'll discuss further, we have fifty thousand to address Emerald Ash Bore, but we're looking at doing a grant program if this position would be approved and this forester would oversee that, to help individuals with ash trees in their home, at their home. The other one is a Park Detail Crew. This is something that, as I go around the community, I'm sure you've noticed, there's different items we need to have addressed. And our current park crews aren't able to always get around to do those, like painting handrails, edging, trimming, various things like that. And so, this Park Detail Crew would be seasonal staff that would address those items throughout the year. And then, the last one is hazardous material cleanup. We deal with a lot of homeless encampments, and having to clean those up, our park staff go out and clean up those camps. We find a lot of hazardous materials, hypodermic needles, human waste, things like that. And so, this would be funding that through a contract. Moving into recreation, last year, we had a couple requests for the Recreation Division. As, as we're coming out of the pandemic, we're realizing we have opportunities to bring in more revenue through some of these positions. The first one is a Recreation Supervisor for the Inglewood Recreation Center. Really, the goal of this position would be to enhance the management of the ERC staff, along with facility rentals, scholarship program management, programming of various youth athletics and classes. And like I said, this one is also looking at revenue. As we recover, bringing in more programs, getting new people into our facility, that position would oversee that. Guest Services Supervisor, at one time, we had five guest service supervisors. We're down to two. Our facility's open ninety-two hours during the week, so two staff at forty hours a week. We don't quite have enough coverage. And so, this Guest Service Supervisor would oversee the safety and engagement of our customers at the front desk. The Recreation Communication Coordinator, currently, we have this position that's part-time. It works with Chris Hargreth in Communications to Market Recreation, Pirate's Cove and Malle Center, as well as Parks to, to our community. And so, the Guest Service Supervisor, we're looking to make a full-time position to assist with that. They also produce the Recreation Guide in the Citizen as well. And then, we're also looking to add in a part-time event assistant. Currently, we have Toni Ardenley, who does the events. She's a sole person putting on a lot of events throughout the year. So, this would be a part-time event assistant that would help her out throughout the year. And then, this year, through funding, we received an additional thirty-five thousand for events. We would like to see that again for future years, for next year specifically, to continue bringing in great entertainment to our events and a lot of the logistics, we can do more with, with additional funding. And then, the last one is something that I believe ERC has looked at for many years, is a Child Care Program Director that'd be part-time. We recently got licensing at the ERC for childcare, and we're running summer camps. We filled those summer camps this year. We'd like to expand our childcare program to be annually, throughout the year, before school, after school, and then, full-day care at the ERC in addition to summer camps. So, we see that as a revenue generating position as well. Potentially, we, we ran some numbers, if we offered before-after-school care and as well as full-day camps, we could generate another two-hundred thousand dollars for the ERC. Moving to aquatics, we have two requests for Pi, one for Pirate's Cove and one for the ERC. One, we'd like to bring in a full-time aquatics coordinator to cover the evenings and weekends at the ERC pool, as well as an aquatics coordinator promoting our current one at Pirate's Cove to a supervisor position to oversee all operations and also increase the safety level at Pirate's Cove. And then, the library isn't necessarily requesting a new position. We have a current contract that oversees our security. We would like to bring security in-house, so we may actually have a savings in doing that. I'll cover that in a, in a minute here. So, going through costs, this is for the Parks Division. You can see what we're requesting. They're big ask, but definitely needed in parks. Real quick, I'll cover the Community Forestry Program, the repurposing of the Emerald Ash Bore, that fifty thousand dollars that we have in the PIF funding. That is something, like I said, we'd like to turn into a grant program, utilizing some of those funds for the community to apply for grants, to address the ash trees that they may own. And then, the Recreation Division, this breaks down the cost, what would be needed for the positions requested. We're also addressing the part-time minimum wage and the compression that we're having with our guest services, part-time staff, ensuring that we're competitive in the market. And if we're successful with the Guest Services Supervisor, we would have a decrease in twenty hours. So, we'd repurpose those twenty-hour part-time position into a full-time. And then, for the Aquatics Division, you can see what we're looking for for that. The promotion is only a four-thousand-dollar, a little over four-thousand-dollar cost to bring that coordinator to a supervisor, as well as, we do have a decrease in our savings if we do move that part-time position to a full-time coordinator. We'd save twenty-eight thousand, but increase it with a full-time position. This slide highlights the contract we currently have. It's fifty-eight thousand dollars annually. We'd like to bring that in-house to have a full-time staff member oversee the security of the library, as well as any of the savings that we do incur over, with reducing that contract. We would actually move to programs. So, the children's programs, we're going to be asking for another two thousand, but we'd be able to have that money come out of the contract if we move to in-house for the security. So, we all, we have a big ask this year, but they're definitely needed positions. There are some one-time savings that we will experience in making some of these changes. The Golf Course Fund is a key walk, which I'll cover in a second here, of that twenty-one thousand dollar cost. And that's out of the Enterprise Fund. So, this just goes into more description of the positions we're asking for and what the costs are. So, Recreation Division and their requests. Aquatics, and the two requests for the aquatics positions. And the operational cost, again, it breaks down, we've added training into this, the hazardous materials cleanup. Chemical costs are increasing annually for both ERC and Pirate's Cove. And then, additional training. We did cut our training budget some last year due to the pandemic, and we'd like to bring that funding back. And then, like I said, the children's programs for the library, we would have a cost savings if we moved to the Security Associate in-house. We are proposing raising fees at Pirate's Cove by one dollar, and then, learn-to-swim classes, fifty cents per lesson, so there'd be a slight increase. Right now, we're also doing analysis on field rentals and pavilion rentals, looking at other communities to see if we're in line with what they're charging. So, that may be another proposed fee increase that we could bring in some more revenue. And then, here, you can just see how we align with the strategic plan. For the most part, safety, neighborhoods, governance and economy are covered through our requests. We have two capital requests. One is for the City Forester. That's a thirty-thousand-dollar truck request. And then, the Key Walk, which is a bridge system that goes on top of the roof at Broken T. It's a metal roof out there, and we can't get contractors to climb on it. And so, we've talked to our Facilities Division, and they recommended this Key Walk. It's twenty-one thousand dollars to install, but it improves safety in any weather condition, so you have access to the roof. And again, that would be out of the Enterprise Fund. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Director Underhill. Member Russell.
Thank you, and thank you, Director Underhill, for the presentation. How would we accomplish in-house security?
That's a good question. We would like to hire a Security Associate in-house, and we do have a staff member that has been training our current security part-time staff. We converted a couple part-time positions to oversee security and assist. When the contract is not covered, we don't have full security for the hours that that library is open. And so, that position, in addition to our two part-time Security Associates, would help with that.
So, is there, then, there must be an additional expense to that? We're not just saving the fifty-eight thousand that we're currently paying. We're just redirecting that to those people?
Correct. And we do have one open FTE that we Correct, and we do have one open FTE that we would be utilizing for this in addition to repurposing the funding from the contract.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Member Russell. I do have a question. I really like the idea of the director, the part-time director for childcare. I guess I just have some confusion. Does that position also encompass the summer program that you spoke about? And you stated that there was a potential increase of revenues of $200,000?
Potentially, it could be if we do before and after-school care along with a full-day childcare program.
Okay, so that's the gross amount in terms of revenue. Okay, thank you very much, Director Underhill. No further questions? Yeah, no further questions, so thank you very much, Director Underhill.
Thank you very much.
We are moving on to Director Van Rye with the South Platte Renewal. Good evening.
Good evening, council. I've got a few of them, I've got South Platte Renew and the two enterprise funds. So we'll start with South Platte Renew and just keep in mind that this is a really high level. We do have our joint council meeting with the City of Inglewood and the City of Littleton in July. And at that joint council meeting, we will go into greater detail for South Platte Renew since it is a joint venture between the two cities. Oh, I didn't realize I had the remote. Okay, our overall strategic goals for South Platte Renew are long-term financial sustainability. We have the CDPH driven regulations that keep getting stricter and stricter. Reg 85 covers nutrients, predominantly phosphorus and nitrogen. We have infrastructure repairs and asset replacement. It's a large, facet, large regional facility and has a lot of concrete and steel and motors and, and pumps and things like that, and they wear out over time. And then ultimately, innovation and partnerships is a focus area that we've, we've been building on over the last several years to not only innovate through new technology, but innovate the existing concrete and steel that we have there in terms of how we use the assets that are at South Platte Renew. And then the partnerships, which you'll see more in July, are focused, we've increased a lot of our partnerships with universities, which is a great way to help drive the innovation that we need to meet our long-term regulatory driver, which is Reg 31, which is another nutrient regulation that comes into, will, will come into, will have to be in compliance within about 15 years. And that's a substantial, substantial investment that'll be required. Overall, we have largely stabilized the operations aspect of, of South Platte Renew and, and over the last few years since I've been here, have really figured out ways to increase the efficiency overall. And so really, the, on the, the total operations budget right now is approximately $17.4 million and we're only projecting an increase of about $18,000. So we've kept it largely flat by really streamlining expenses and we, we do a couple of budget meetings where we go line item by line item and really optimize those line items to really be at a situation where the operations increase is pretty low. We have no new FTEs. Right now, we're at 86 FTEs and we, we operate slightly under that with a, again, from an efficiency perspective, but as new requirements, as we, as we have new requirements, we, we use any of the couple excess FTEs that we have to meet those requirements. Operational cost requests, we, like I said, everything's pretty well stabilized, so we have nothing new. And then rate and fee increases, I'll cover when we get to the enterprise funds. Alignment is largely infrastructure, but you can see there's a few other topics that we touched. Sustainability being a big one, the regional wastewater plant. We recover solids, liquids and gas and it's a pretty, it's a pretty significant sustainability enterprise because we return clean water to the river. We apply solids to fields out east and we recover gas, clean it and sell it to, into the Excel pipeline. Oh, did I go too fast? Nope, okay. Here is our capital project request and you can see the big one is the second one. And like I said, we'll go into more detail when we do the joint cities meeting. It's a KEMP UV improvements, that's the project that's, that's meeting that Reg 85, those Reg 85 requirements and also upgrading our disinfection, which, which helps us remove nitrogen from the process, which again, helps us with our nutrient compliance. But you see that's at 11 million and that's because we're right into the construction of that project right now. So the total capital is 15 million. Again, that's split between the two cities 50-50, 50% Inglewood, 50% City of Littleton. These are additional capital requests, which is vehicles, machinery and computer hardware. Those are pretty typical as to what we see in terms of replacing old vehicles. We actually have some old vehicles that are, they don't get a lot of travel because all they do is drive around the plant site, so there's not a lot of miles on them. But we have some vehicles that are from 2003 and 2004 that are pretty well-driven into the ground. So we're, we're going to replace a couple of those. Any questions on South Platte Renew?
Don't see any questions, I guess we can move on to the next topic.
All right, sewer fund. So the Inglewood Sewer Fund is how Inglewood pays for South Platte Renew as well as the collection system portion of the Inglewood Sanitary Sewer. Now, if you recall, the northern two-thirds of the city is covered by the Inglewood, the City of Inglewood, the southern third of the city approximately is covered by South Inglewood Sanitation District. So that's outside of the, from a collection system perspective, that's outside the city's responsibility. Our goals and enhancements are, we are up, we're improving the staffing of utilities as a whole. This is both water and sewer. This is in alignment with the results from the master planning effort that we presented on about 15 months ago and it's right in line with what we had projected. The only difference in what we had projected then versus what we're proposing now is the timing. We had originally projected a significant increase in staff in 2020 and then a secondary increase in 2021. We delayed all that by a year and so we did the significant increase in staff this year. And then there's the ongoing second increase, which would be three FTEs, which I'll get into between water and sewer in the next, next few slides. Asset management, we're continuing to focus on the collection system and getting it lined. And then ultimately, the, the big line item is the South Platte Renew funding. So we have another engineer that were proposed for water and sewer. The split, they're going to be working 90% on water projects and about 10% on sewer projects. So you can see the proportionate split at 10%. And then the utility billing system is at .6, so it's 60% of the total cost of that. And the reason why is because we bill 11,000 in-city accounts, but we bill 35,000 out-of-city accounts. And so a large portion of that funding is covered to accommodate that billing of those connector district customers. Proposed rate and fee increases, so the sewer connection fee, we, we did the study last year and we are proposing instead of keeping it stagnant is to follow the Engineering News Record Construction Cost Index and moving that up by 2.7% this year. Sewer rates, we're proposing at 4.5%. If you remember the financial plan that we went through last year and, and have talked about previously. Essentially, what we had proposed over the next 10 years to meet the capital needs and meet the city's responsibility for South Platte Renew funding was a stable 4.5% per year increase to keep it predictable for people. And that keeps up with the cost of doing business and also helps us catch up from, from the years of deferred maintenance in a way that's predictable and reasonable for our customers. You can see that generates $20.4 million. That's because that's not only the 11,000 in-city accounts, but also the 35,000 connector district accounts. So that's a significant population that is contracted through the City of Inglewood for South Platte Renew. The last piece is the connector district multiplier, which we talked about in February. We are working with the connector districts on this to validate our approach on it. And if you recall, the proposal was to move from 1.05 to 1.2. That generates $2.2 million annually and that's for all, that's for customers outside the City of Inglewood. Those are connector districts and so we are, we're moving forward with that. The billing cycle of that, billing of those external customers is from June to November. So we missed this year's billing cycle, which will allow us time to work with the connector districts so that they can adjust to it. And then next year, the goal is to pass it, ideally get it passed late this year so that they can prepare their customers for next year's billing cycle, which will be June through November as well. Personnel requests, engineer one is, we talked about it earlier, that's 10% of the cost. Nothing significant on operational cost. Essentially, it's South Platte Renew funding and asset management. You can see it's mainly infrastructure. The couple of things on the capital side are the collections improvements. That's the lining of the sewer system, a lot of our sewer system is clay. And then the enterprise, the, the funding of South Platte Renew capital, which is half, 50-50 and that maintains 50% ownership between the two cities. Questions on sewer?
Member Russell?
Thank you, I just have a question. If you accidentally missed the billing cycle on the connector districts?
No, we didn't accidentally. What, what happened was is from the timing of, on the timing of it, I think we got more significant, we got more significant pushback from the connector districts as it relates to moving from 1.05 to 1.2. And 1.2 is wholly, a wholly reasonable approach. We, we used a industry guidance approach from AWWA and WEF in establishing that. I think in order to, to allow it to be a smooth transition, we, we felt that working with them through this summer into next, into this fall's budget season would give them the opportunity to provide input and to look at our analysis, which, which they have done. And they've, they've raised a couple of points, but we don't think that there are anything that are remarkable, that's going to remarkably change the analysis. But we also want to, we want them to have that ability to provide that comment since it is a significant effect on their customers.
Okay, I just, I want to say we've had a significant effect on our citizens too and we need to keep that in mind, so.
I completely agree.
I appreciate it.
And, and, and yeah, it's an important thing because you saw it's $2.2 million worth of revenue, which helps limit the debt burden that the city, the City of Inglewood will have to cover in order to fund the 50% of South Platte projects. So it's, it's an important, it's an important step. We think our rationale is, is very sound and hopefully by the time we get to this time next year, they'll be, they will have notified their customers that it's coming and it will be something that is planned for.
Thank you for the question and comment, Member Russell. No further questions from council, on to the water fund.
On the water fund side, again, it follows the results of the master plan from last April. We're, we're in year two of implementing a number of the findings. And if you recall, the vast majority of the findings were on the deferred, the deferred maintenance and the minimal staffing levels that we had. We have ramped up the staffing levels to what we believe is a, a level of service that we should be providing on such critical infrastructure as water. And then we've also made plans for investing in, in the, in the water system in a way that our customers will feel the effect of that. So the first goal on the number one is taste, odor and hardness. And if anybody's been in Inglewood for a long period of time, this, this comes up a lot. And from what I understand, it's come up a lot since the 80s. And so we're, we're actually moving forward with a concerted effort to, to try and change that. And we think it's in three areas that we think we can do it. One is changing, working to optimize our source water, where we're pulling our source water, to pull it from closer to Chatfield as opposed to from Union Ave. We think that just that stretch of the river helps to improve the, the source water quality. The second is operational optimization of the, of the distribution system. And so we have some dead-end lines, that's part of what we want to invest is looping those or putting in flushing programs that clears out water as it, as it becomes stale. And then hardness, so as a resident of Inglewood, I, my stainless steel refrigerator has the water spots all down the front of it from when I get glasses of water out of it because I drink the water every day, although it does stain my refrigerator with the hardness and it seems like my dishwasher can never get them completely clean. So that's what we're going to focus on and that's softening. And so some kind of, some kind of capital investment to help improve that hardness through softening. That is the focus over the next few, few years with, with a goal in, in the next two to three years that people will see a substantial change in, in the water that they bring into their homes. Additionally, we have staffing improvements that we've talked about. There's a few more staffing requests that we're making. Lead service lines, that's something that is going to be affecting the city at some point from a regulatory perspective. We're going to get ahead of it. If you all know, Denver has, has gone through this process over the last couple of years. Our population is not at the level where it's EPA mandated yet, but we're going to get ahead of it because we do have several lead service lines and we want to have a program in place for that. Metering, we have a number of flat-rate customers, which we want to convert to meter customers because that just makes more sense from a, from a water use perspective and just a billing perspective. Frankly, most people who move from a flat rate to a metered will likely see their, will likely see their bill go down some amount. Investing in the deferred maintenance and asset management, water resource resiliency and quality, and we've talked, we've touched a bit on that. And then we have outdated electronics and control systems. We have a number of investments that we want to make there to, to modernize our systems. These are the staffing proposals that we've seen, that we are proposing. An operations superintendent for the water system, that'd be out at the Allen Plant. An INC manager, which is integration and controls. That's the, basically the electronic brains behind how the systems work and how they communicate from pump stations to tanks to treatment to delivery. The engineer would be the one I talked about before, which is split between water and sewer. We've got a $70 million capital program over the next five years. We need people to execute those projects. And then the Coggsdale billing, which is .3 of the total. Rate and fees in alignment with what we, what the 10-year financial plan shows. Again, it's predictable, it follows the ENR for water connection fees and the rates go up 4.5% at a predictable rate on an annual basis over the next 10 years. Personnel requests, these are the, just the summary of those personnel requests that we talked about and what they would be doing. Operational cost requests, these are some increased areas of focus, so water main repair. We do that in-house right now. It's inefficient in how we, how we execute it. We want to make that more efficient through utilization of contractors. That way, our, our in-house staff can focus on more programmatic things like exercising valves and, and flushing and things like that. Tree and vegetation removal, we have underfunded that. We have city ditch, which is our main water supply conduit from, from the Allen Plant all the way back to Chatfield. There's a lot of trees in the open sections of that ditch. Ultimately, as part of that program to improve our taste, odor and hardness, we have plans to pipe the remaining sections of that ditch, which has been, from what I can tell, the plan for many, many years for the city. We think that if we execute on that, that we can increase the reliability of our source water supply from near Chatfield. water supply from near Chatfield more year round. And then, electrical equipment investments, we have a lot of 480 power for pumps and things like that, and this is to help support those. As you can see where the breakdown, it's generally infrastructure. You can see how they, they fall in terms of that. Capital requests, you can see the list of the projects. This is, this is a refinement of what came out of the master plan. I guess the, the thing to show is it's 10.8 million. So, we're ramping up the capital requests. Part of that is funded by our current fund balance, part of that is funded through debt, like the WIFIA contract that we talked about last week. But you can see the investment and the areas of investment are aligning with those goals that we had. And I'm open to questions.
Thank you, Director Van Ri, Member Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Thank you, Director Van Ri. You mentioned the potentially encapsulating the, the city ditch. How much of that is open that needs to be enclosed?
Ah, what is it?
Steve, is it?
Two and a half miles.
Two and a half miles. That's all the way between Chatfield, all the way up into Englewood, or is that?
Yeah, it's, it's essentially from Chatfield to the Allen Plant. So, that's the part that we want to, we want to get fully piped because that's the, and there's a number of reasons for that. One is that, that timing of, you know, it's hard to run water in a, in the winter in an open ditch. Two, open ditches are, are exposure for contamination, whether they're malicious or, or accidental. Three, we can, we think we can, we can optimize the, the timing through our water rights portfolio to pull from, at the base of Chatfield much more often through the year, which we think will have a, have a positive effect on, on the water quality.
Good. Second question on the, the water quality, you talked about hardness and then the, the lines where you need to loop them as two, two potential things you could do to increase. What is the, the, I'm thinking at different times, sometimes the water is discolored, or I know like on my reverse osmosis filter, those, those, the big, or the, the first filters, the pre-filters, they get really mucky. That seems like not hardness, but some kind of, like the water's not clean. Is that coming from the pipes, or, or do we need to also improve our filtration at the, at the plant?
I think it's, it's partly sediments in the pipes, and, and so, one of the ways you can, you can address that is through a more frequent flushing program, a unidirectional flushing program, which we haven't really, we do a little bit, but we can be much more intentional in terms of how we flush the system. I think as we start to replace areas where we have four and six inch main lines, we'll start to see what the inside of those 80-year-old pipes looks like and, and really have a sense for, for how much of that is sediment that's coming through from just buildup in the pipes versus how much is actually, how much is actually from a, you, we wouldn't, by the time you, by the time it comes out of the plant, it's, it's really clean water. And so, we, and, and again, this isn't a water quality issue. We meet, we meet water quality, and this is, and this is, I'm, I'm sorry, I used the wrong term. It's more of a water aesthetics issue. It's, it's taste odor and hardness. And so, we meet the quality as, as regulated by CDPE and the EPA, and we think that all of those areas help to contribute to some of that issue.
Does the, the, the water quality test, is that the, the test done directly after it's been filtered at the Allen Water Plant, or do they collect from different places around?
Yeah, we have, we have multiple sampling points that we have to collect from.
Okay. Do you find significant differences in those?
You know, the, well, so one of the things that, so this is where investment in the GIS system and investment in, in our engineering capability and, and more specifically in, in developing a digital water model, is what we can tell is we can tell how, how long water, based on the flow in the pipes, based on the demands around that area, how long, how long that water stays there. Because if water stays too long, it starts to lose its disinfection residual and becomes stale. And so, that's a, that's an area that we'll, we will focus on in terms of getting the digital model, and then we can understand how the water's more, at a benchtop level, understand how the water's moving through the system, and then make targeted repairs and improvements.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Member Anderson. City Manager Lewis.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I just wanted to share some numbers that, as Director Van Ri had talked about the rate increases, I realize there may be a little bit of rate fatigue after last year's budget process. But just to keep this in perspective, 4.5% on sewer rates equals a dollar and 10 cents. On the water side, that's a dollar and 5 cents. And we do plan on keeping, only adjusting that capital fee that's on the bill every two years. So, we have another year of the $15 before that goes to 16. So, if you look at cumulatively, you know, it's about $2 for next year for that four to 4.5% increase.
Thank you, City Manager Lewis. Any other questions from council?
That $2, is that per quarter, per month, per year?
That's for the monthly bill. And it's actually a dollar and 10 cents for the 4.5% on sewer and a dollar and 5 cents for the monthly on water.
Thank you, Member Ward. No further questions from council. Thank you very much, Director Van Ri.
Thank you.
That may be your, actually, that's your part of the presentation and also completes all of the presentations from the directors, if I'm reading this correctly. So, I'll pass it back over to Director Low.
I just want to give you a running total for the total request from last Monday's presentation. So, you can see the one-time request from all the departments and ongoing request, the total request for a general fund, 1.8 million ongoing and 430,000 one-time. And here's additional funding from general, oh, sorry. Let me see. Additional from general fund and other funds. So, I just want to make sure if we cover all the questions you have, or are there any goals and priorities you have or haven't addressed in the 2022 operating budget?
Member Questa.
Pardon me. Thank you, Mayor Protem Sierra. In addition to how this is outlined here, ongoing, one-time, and then assessed to each department that has requested it, can we also see what percentage increase that is to their current budget? That would be helpful to me, for me, just to see stacked against each other which ones are seeking the most increase in their funds.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions from council? I guess I do have a question. So, this is obviously just the ask from all the different departments within the city, but there's, is there still going to be some sort of dialogue between city manager and staff about, obviously just outlining where we're supposed to be in terms of revenues and then identify what are priorities for, you know, based off everything we saw. We saw a lot of FTEs, and we, in here, we saw a lot of one-times. Not everything's going to come back to us when we start the discussions in August or so in terms of budgeting. Am I understanding that timeline correctly?
Correct. Do you want to talk about your plan?
Thank you, Director Low, and thank you for the question. Mayor Protem, essentially, this is your first glance at the budget and all of the requests, and you've essentially seen the wish list from each department. We're finalizing, kind of zeroing in on the revenue forecast for 2022 to really know what we have to work with. But similar to what you did at the last meeting when you gave us some feedback on particularly one position, if you have feedback like that on other positions that you think, hmm, we like that, but maybe this isn't the year to pursue that, that's very helpful for us to have that kind of guidance and feedback and direction from you all. The same with some of the programmatic improvements. We are, as you can see from the different presentations, we're also including a number of service delivery enhancements. So, in just a few cases, more service, I would say, but in, in many cases, enhancements to existing services. So, unlike last year where we rolled out Restorative Justice and a couple of, and the year before that, the Neighborhood Resources Program, we don't really have wholesale new services that we're proposing, but each department has a number of service enhancements. It would be helpful to us to know where you think, we're doing fine, we don't need to enhance that service. And also, if you see positions that, that you feel like either you need more information on or simply feel like they're not needed, that's the kind of direction and feedback we could really use.
Thank you, City Manager Lewis. Member Questa.
Thank you, Member Questa. That's fair. So, I guess I can weigh in. When I look at the budget, any, anytime that there's an opportunity to increase revenues based off a new position, obviously, I would, I would prioritize that in a sense. So, I mentioned that earlier in terms of Director Underhill when she mentioned the, the part-time director position. And as a parent, you just realize how hard it is to get childcare and summer camp within the city, so I think it does make sense if we're able to provide those services. So, I definitely would be in favor of that. And obviously, I think staff knows, you know, what they need best. We're only looking at a single line item, not much dialogue regarding it. So, if there is something that does come up that I do want a little bit more clarification, I'll do that. But I guess since you are looking for feedback even from the previous meeting, I would be in favor of the DEI budget line item. I know that there was a few people that did state that they weren't in favor of it. But any, anytime that we can improve within our HR and it's something that HR feels it is necessary within the city and for staff, I definitely would be in favor of that as well. So, nothing else really comes to mind in terms of what I would remove or would prioritize, but that's my two cents on the subject. Member Questa.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. And City Manager Lewis, to the, to the thoughts from the Mayor Protem just now. So, for instance, that position that, that got some comments at our last budget update, and then Mayor Protem had some thoughts now, will you continue to include these in the budget even if you get negative feedback, and then we can discuss them at the time of making a decision? Or will you begin pulling things now? I, for instance, that particular position, I could go either way, honestly, depending upon how the rest of the budget shakes out. So, for, for many of these, even if there's some thoughts on pulling it, I'd like to see them included to the end and then make those decisions when we get a little closer to voting, would be my perspective.
Thank you for that comment and question, Member Questa. The answer is a little nuanced insofar as I would typically take three council members' recommendations against something and say, we probably wouldn't include it. Now, I realize that is not a majority, but certainly what we're doing now is looking at how we could incorporate those, that work into another. You may remember there was a training and development position included also, so how could we make that potentially a dual role and still achieve, you know, some of the council's desires, but address some concerns from other council members? So, that's how I try to balance the, particularly when there's kind of split thoughts on a topic like that. I also want to correct my statement. We've been working on sustainability so long, I forget that that's a new position that's also being requested. So, we are doing a, a new service with the part-time sustainability coordinator.
Thank you, Member Questa. Any other questions from council? Member Russell?
Thank you, and I appreciate what's been shared. So, obviously, you, as the director of all of staff, understand what we absolutely need, correct? I mean, that's going to weigh into what's most important. But as council weighs in, I, I think that we don't really know the most important things that you need. But obviously, we can't have everything in here.
I, I think you're correct. However, as I mentioned at the beginning of the first budget workshop, this, we are going to be in a better position from a funding standpoint. Revenues are up, and, and that's not even including what we're getting from the American Rescue Plan Act funding. We are going to have reven, increased revenue that's going to be, I think, a sustainable increased revenue. As I mentioned, we have a 10 to 14% increase in property tax revenue because this is a revaluation year. And so, that's new revenue that will be ongoing. So, frankly, this is, I am inclined to be much more open to the needs of the departments. Obviously, we have a budget review committee with, which is an internal staff committee that hasn't even started. So, we will definitely be digging into these further to see what we really feel like as a finance director, IT director, myself and my department and finance staff, we're going to be really digging into these budgets. We're going to be looking at line items, what departments haven't spent in past years, why are you asking for it to be there again if you haven't spent it the last three years? So, we're going to be really digging into those questions, and I think there will be some refinements. But I guess what I would say generally is that I'm inclined to be very open, for the first time in two years, two budget years, to what the departments are requesting because I think the revenue is going to be there.
So, and with that said, I do have one other thing. We have huge unfunded capital projects. And so, if revenue keeps increasing, we need to start addressing some of those unfunded projects instead of always spending everything that comes in. So, that's another thing I think we need to keep in mind, too.
That's a great point. And keep in mind that as the operational budgets increase, the, when we have new revenue for operational costs, we also have increased capital revenue. So, they go hand in hand, and of course, the charter, you know, defines what we should spend of total revenues on capital. So, those numbers are going to be going up. What I can say about the unfunded capital list is that you all made difficult but important decisions in spending down the unassigned fund balance to the tune of, you know, about $9 million this year that really knocked a lot of those projects off that list. And so, we do feel like we're catching up. But you're absolutely right, we have a long way to go, and we want to keep directing as much money as we can towards those capital projects.
Member Questa.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Director Low, thank you for all the work on this, and thank you to all the departments for putting this together. I believe it was last week, and I beg your pardon if I'm, if I'm incorrectly remembering this, that you mentioned that a balanced budget would be presented to council. With all the increases, the cost increases that have been presented thus far, if adopted just as presented, would it be balanced in its current form?
We had a preliminary estimate on revenue. Based on the current estimate, the revenue received probably cannot cover all the additional increases. But during the budget review process, what we're going to do is we're going to compare 2022 budget to the budget presented in the past four years to see if there's always a cushion. If we always budget more than what we needed, definitely we can adjust the line item.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Could I add to that, Mayor?
Go ahead, City Manager Lewis.
So, what, what you've seen tonight, we think would be covered. However, Director Low is correct insofar as we have increases in our health insurance costs, which are annual. Those luckily, right, are capped at 7%. So, we are going to plug in the max, but in fact, we think we can negotiate that down just like we have every year. We have not shown you the 3.5% for the EEA and the EPBA salary increases and some increase for the remainder of the, the staff, you know, up to or less than, like we did last year for salary increases. So, Director Low is exactly right. When we show you kind of those overall city expenditures plus this number, we, we are not balanced. So, we are going to have to make cuts, but it's definitely a better situation than we've been in in the last couple of years.
Thank you, Member Questa. Any other comments from council? I don't see any. Director Low, thank you very much, and thank you to, to staff and leadership for their presentations and just the succinct, succinct information that they provide over the past couple of weeks. So, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Yep. Thank you. And I think it's time for a break. 7:50 okay for everyone? We're about 30 minutes ahead of schedule, so we're doing good time. So, we'll meet back at about 7:50. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everyone. He's right outside. Was Questa outside?
You wanted to see him.
I thought I saw him out there. Please be seated. Item five, consideration of minutes from the previous session. Any changes to the minutes from the June 7th City Council Meeting? Don't see any changes. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes of this June 7th council meeting?
I move to approve the minutes of the June 7th council meeting.
Second.
Thank you, Member Anderson. Member Ward? Please vote.
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Questa?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Sierra?
Aye.
Member Ward?
Aye.
Let the record show, five ayes.
Thank you. And then, consideration of the special city council meeting of June 14, 2021, any changes to that? Seeing none, may I get a motion?
I move to approve the minutes from June 14.
Second.
Thank you, Member Anderson. Member Ward? Please vote.
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Questa?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Sierra?
Aye.
Member Ward?
Aye.
Let the record show, five ayes.
Thank you. There are no appointments, communications, proclamations, or recognition tonight. And now, recognition of scheduled public comment. The deadline to speak for scheduled public comment is Wednesday by 5:00 PM prior to the meeting through the City Clerk's office. This is an opportunity for the public to address City Council. There is an expectation that the presentation will be conducted in a respectful manner. Council may ask questions for clarification, but there will not be any dialogue, and we will limit the presentation to five minutes. Up first is Mr. Jake Gilbert, an Inglewood resident, will address council regarding the off-leash survey. Good evening, Mr., I think either of the two would work. Thank you, Mr. Gilbert. Please state your name and cross streets or address.
Yeah, hi. So I'm Jake Gilbert. I live at Cherokee in Princeton. So thanks very much for having me. I sent a few images to the clerk email address. I don't know if they are able to put those on the PowerPoint screen or anything.
We did distribute those to council, but we didn't know you wanted them on the screen.
Oh, that's okay. That's good. That's great. Thank you. So I'll sort of refer to those, I guess, as I get there. So I would just like to make a few quick points regarding things that have been said about the off-leash parks lately. First, there have been repeated variations of a claim that a given park has only seen X number of code citations in Y number of years. I pulled a number of code enforcement reports from a two-year span, and an important thing to note is that while there are many reports of violations, such as dog-on-dog attacks and dog bites of people, there are not many citations because the offending dog owners almost always run away and code enforcement officers are not able to identify and cite them. Some of the reports I have from the last couple of years include a person who was walking through Jason Park to get to their house across the street, who was sent to the hospital by a bite from an unleashed dog, as well as a man and his leash dog who were both attacked at Centennial Park. And then the dog was threatened to be killed by the same dog owner. In both cases, the owners of the offending dogs fled before they could be identified. I only pulled a handful of reports because they're not cheap, so I'm sure there are more examples that I'm not aware of. I also want to address the random sample survey. That's the survey that is the scientifically valid one. Polco's presentation of the data to you is great, but I'd like to go into a little more granular detail on a couple of points. In Polco's presentation, they stated that newcomers to Inglewood are more supportive of off-leash areas. But for the purposes of the debate our city is having, it's important to differentiate between unfenced off-leash areas like Jason Park and traditional fenced off-leash areas like the K-9 growl. The first image I sent is survey1.jpg. It's table 47. So when it comes to unfenced off-leash areas, you can see that newcomers to Inglewood and long-term residents both show low levels of support that are so close they are within the margin of error. That is to say, there is no significant difference in their support. When it comes to fenced off-leash areas, newcomers to Inglewood are significantly more supportive than long-term residents, but that's because long-term residents are much more likely to say they want no off-leash areas whatsoever. Survey2.jpg, that's the, that's this one with the bar graph and my MS Paint mastery on there. The last, the next point I'd like to make is that 52% of respondents want solely fenced off-leash areas, which is a slight majority, but when you tally up all the respondents that support some kind of reduction in the off-leash program, that picture, or that figure is 73%. So that includes people who want no off-leash areas whatsoever and the small number of respondents who want no dogs allowed in parks at all. That is to say that a substantial majority of residents, 73%, want the off-leash program scaled back in one way or another. Fenced off-leash areas are an excellent solution because it's a good compromise, and in any case, a majority of residents have supported it in the survey. The third image I had was figure 15. Oh, okay. Great, thanks. So when it comes to Jason Park in particular, which is the most controversial part, you can see 66% of respondents supported the three-sided enclosed off-leash area detailed in the survey while 17% opposed it. It's a margin of nearly four to one who want the off-leash area fully fenced. Duncan Park, the solution there, the bisecting the park with a fence had a three-to-one margin approximately. So these specific solutions outlined in the survey have received overwhelming support of the city and are therefore the most democratic solutions available. So that's all I've got.
Any questions from Mr. Gilbert? No questions from council? Mr. Gilbert, thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
And actually, City Councilmember Russell, were you the last person to give response to public comment? Okay, so I guess it's my turn tonight, but Member Ward, do you mind doing it in my place tonight? Or if not, I could definitely do it. It doesn't matter.
A little advance warning is always helpful.
Yeah, exactly. I can do it tonight, so don't worry about it. Thank you. And I've got too many papers going around. Give me one second here, everyone. Next up is Mr. Doug Cohn. An Inglewood resident will address council regarding changes to the building code. Good evening, Mr. Cohn. Good to see you again in person.
Good evening. This feels so strange to be alive in the same room with you all.
It's good to see you, Mr. Cohn, if you could just state your name and your address.
Sure. Doug Cohn. I live in District 2 on Marion Street.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cohn. Go ahead.
I want to share some thoughts. I gave everybody a handout. I want to share some thoughts on the inequities and the way our redevelopment is taking place. Do you want Inglewood to be a diverse city? Do you want Inglewood to be inclusive? Does inclusive include people of different ethnic backgrounds, educational backgrounds, economic status? I don't want to see in Inglewood what's going on in Curtis Park and Sunnyside in Denver, where the people of color are being pushed out to make room for their rich white guys. The redevelopment taking place here in the targeted areas, it's leading to working families being chased out of our city. It's leading to higher rent prices that regular people can't afford. It's leading to much higher property taxes that strain the finances of people on fixed incomes. It's leading to the building of ugly-looking structures that don't blend in with the neighborhoods. It's leading to the destruction of our classy homes. The building codes, as written and implemented, are driving us towards being a gentrified, yuppie kind of city. Is that your vision? When the comprehensive plan was first brought forth in 2003, there was much talk about fixing the first ring suburbs, sometimes called the inner ring suburbs. They were filled with old and small houses, and the idea was that young families wanted larger, newer homes. The idea was pitched that these suburbs must be revitalized. The vision was heavily supported by developers, of course. That's when Inglewood came up with a plan to target specific areas where the older homes had been built. In the 2003 plan and the 2018 update, there's this statement. "Inglewood citizens feel strongly about the character of their existing neighborhoods. It's important that new residential investments and housing rehabs are designed to be compatible with and consistent with surrounding residential neighborhoods. Residential designs should reflect the existing character of the neighborhood." In conclusion, I urge you, as you rewrite the building codes, to be inclusive and diverse. to be inclusive and diverse. On the back of the sheet, I have some websites for quite a bit of research that I've done on where you can find some additional information. Thank you. Oh, one last thing. Next Monday night, if you're free, the Historic Society is having a history talk about the first homesteaders in the area here. And is the event free? I have a couple of flyers on the table back here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cohn. Any questions from council? Mr. Cohn, thank you very much for coming tonight. Thank you for comments. And I believe that completes scheduled public comment. We now move on to unscheduled public comment. Let me read off the statement and then... Actually, there's nothing much different here. Well, this is an opportunity for the public to address city council. There is an expectation that the presentation will be conducted in a respectful manner. Council may ask questions for clarification, but there will not be any dialogue. And we will limit the presentation to three minutes. So city clerk Carlisle, can you state the first speaker for unscheduled public comment?
Yes, Mayor Potem. So we are going to begin with, we have speakers that are both virtually and in person. So we'll start with the in-person public comments. So the first person we have is Becky Deal.
Good evening, Ms. Deal.
Hi.
Good to see you again.
Yes.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Ms. Deal, can you state your name and your address, or where you're located?
Becky Deal. I live on West Radcliffe. I'm here to talk about the off-leash dog area. And yes, I am a long-term resident of Inglewood, going on 35 years. I live real close to Jason Park. I took my kids there. I now take my grandkids there. The off-leash, we have had incidents with dogs roaming on the playground equipment, you know, in that area. Nobody in sight, you know. I am totally opposed of having an off-leash with, especially a playground, with kids. I mean, I don't know what you're thinking. I am not a dog hater or an animal hater by any means. I have adopted, you know, blind animals and, you know, I love animals, but sometimes they just don't mix. If you're going to make a dog park, make a dog park. If you're going to make a playground, make a playground, but they don't mix. That's basically all I'm here to say, is they don't mix.
Thank you, Ms. Deal. Any comments from council? Or any questions?
Just one question. I believe our code requires you to state cross streets. You said West Radcliffe.
Okay, La Pan and Radcliffe.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you for the clarification, Member Ward. Ms. Deal, no further questions from us. Thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Next up, city clerk Carlisle.
It's a tongue twister. Our next speaker is Lisa Swenson.
Good evening, Ms. Swenson. Can you state your name and your cross streets?
Lisa Swenson, 4620 East Oxford and Dahlia.
Okay.
Okay. I came to sort of offer a historical perspective on the dog park at Jason. And I have been going there. I was lucky enough to find it eight years ago. And there almost every morning, I'm part of the morning crew. And that's about 3,000 days of being there. And I have never witnessed an incident between a dog and human, child, or otherwise. So from my perspective, it is a very safe place. I am also a physical therapist that works at a preschool and was part of playground design. And I do appreciate the last person's topic on safety. And I do think that there is a possibility to fence in a playground for general safety for children. However, this dog park and Jason Park is a rare jewel in Inglewood. I had someone tell me last week, this is the happiest park in all of Inglewood. Why would anyone want to change the way it is? And I have used the park for my own personal recreation. It's been wonderful during COVID times. We were able to socialize. I've even used it for cross-country skiing because of the immense size of it. So I think that there are some things that could be done to still maintain the off-leash status and still make it safe. Again, what I've observed from the morning crew, we are good keepers of the space. We clean up the space. We patrol others who aren't maybe looking after it as well as us. And I just would like to say, from the silent majority of those that use the park, we very much appreciate it and hope that it stays off-leash and available to everyone. Thank you. Any questions?
Ms. Swenson, thank you. Member Russell?
Yes, and I don't know if you know the answer to this question. Do you know what the hours are for the off-leash dog parks? Because I know it had changed.
Yes, it seems to have changed. But right now, I believe it's from 6:00 to 11:00 in the summer months. 6:00 to 11:00 in the morning. And I think the same at night, which seems a little late. But during the 11:00 to 6:00, it is to be on leash only.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Seeing no further questions, thank you very much, Ms. Swenson. Next.
All right. Our next speaker this evening is Wallace Lukowski. I might have said that wrong. Lukowski.
Good evening. Was it Mr. Lukowski? Lukowski. Good evening, Mr. Lukowski. Can you state your name and your address, or your cross streets? Excuse me.
Thank you so much. My name is Wallace Lukowski, and I live at 4330 South Jason Street. I have a nice speech written here. I'm going to skip it. I live between Rotolo and Jason Street Park. I love the dog park. I don't go to Rotolo much because I can't take my dog there. It's not... It says I can't take it there because I can't have it on off-leash. I can only have it on a six-foot leash. It's tough to play dogs with a ball, throwing it, and only let your dog go six feet to have any fun with your dog. And you ever try it with a frisbee? It don't work. Dogs just look at you like you're stupid. So that six-foot leash law that you have ain't working for us. Rotolo Park is nice. It has a, similar to Jason. It has a playground. It has a soccer field. It has a pavilion. And the only difference is the dogs. I would say about 80% of the people who use Rotolo Park don't care about the law. They always tell me the same thing, and I wrote them down here for you. I didn't see any signs. So I'm going to leave my dog off-leash. There are only two signs in Rotolo Park about having your dog on the leash at all times. There are six or more at Jason Street Park. The other people say, I just want to walk through the park to get to Jason Park because that's the better park. The last one is, oh, we don't want to use the K-9 Corral because it's a bad place for small dogs. Unfortunately, that's true. I was there for the Bitner Run this Saturday morning. I did the water station right next to the water park. I saw many dogs get attacked that were there. Bigger dogs attacking little dogs, big dogs attacking little dogs. Some of the people tried to stop, but a lot of people didn't. So if anyone who feels that they want to try to take their dog to the K-9 Corral and be safe, you better have it on a leash. I don't know if I'm going over time here. I'll just read my end then. I only have one question. Why do you want to change Jason Street Park after 19 or 20 years? Many of the Inglewood people have become disenchanted with what's going on. Crime, building, traffic, homeless, and businesses closing. The question is, is Inglewood going to lose another piece? Or is this fair city going to lose its small-time feelings? Well, your dogs all think so. So try to save Jason Park for another 20 years, like the city council of 2002 did.
Time's up.
Made their decision.
Mr. Lukowski, thank you very much for your time.
In one meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Lukowski.
That's how long it took them to make that decision, not 14. Thank you.
Any comments for Mr. Lukowski? Questions? Seeing none. Thank you very much, Mr. Lukowski.
All right. Our next speaker is Stephen Kelly.
Good evening, Mr. Kelly. Could you state your name and your cross streets?
Yeah, good evening. Steve Kelly, District 3, Radcliffe in Delaware. At the last meeting, Representative Wink said, in regard to letting citizens vote for mayor, this is a solution looking for a problem. Well, the same can be said for the off-leash dog park issue. A flawed survey gives slanted results. Why is it flawed? As the Polco presenter reported to council, paraphrasing, "We helped write the questions, and the questions are written to get the desired results." That was 1 hour 33 minutes into that meeting. Look at the questions from page 88 of your results. How about no fence at Emerson Park? How about no fence at Northwest Greenbelt? How about a fenced dog park at Jason Park? Inglewood residents are smart enough to see the slanted nature of these questions. Second reason, the verbatim responses were not provided to you. If you see page 64 of the full report. Many people passionately took time to explain their reasoning to city council, to no avail. These people, I'll argue, have knowledge of and have thought about this issue. Last, only 40% of the random survey respondents own dogs. As several council members mentioned, a lot of thinking has been put into this. Don't let a majority of people having limited knowledge of the issue weigh in on the decisions. Also, over half the respondents had no dogs at all. Moving on, the last off-leash task force meeting took place. Wow. Two new members were added for this last meeting, where a recorded vote was taken. Both spoke out against off-leash privileges. Is this stacking the deck in favor of the opposition? And the votes were 50-50. Also, two people present at the meeting, who are vehemently against off-leash privileges, said they had dog-human bite data. They were asked, but would not share it with the task force. In my opinion, this is an egregious withholding of pertinent information for this body. It's amazing to me that with all of the quote "thought" unquote put into this matter, the task force was prevented from seeing this important data. Recall Mayor Olson said at a recent meeting, there were no dog bites. I'll go with that. Yes, this task force created solutions in search of a problem. Recall, the Parks Commissioner on the task force said there might be a problem in the future, therefore put up a fence. This is a solution for a problem that has yet to occur. Fact, based on recorded data, there is no real problem. Please don't spend time, council members, creating controversial solutions to problems that have yet to occur. Think about the problems you are going to be creating by putting up the fenced area. Look at the K-9 Corral's aggressive dog numbers. In summary, I urge you to make no changes at Jason Park, or Centennial Park for that matter. There is an overwhelming sense of community spirit at Jason Park. People have moved to this area because of the park. 17-plus years of success, only six incidences in three and a half years. Thank you.
Mr. Kelly, thank you very much for your time tonight. Any questions from council? Seeing none. Thank you very much, Mr. Kelly, for coming tonight. Any other commenters tonight? Oh, online.
So we do have three people who are joining us online. Let's see. Gary Mays, can you hear us? Just trying to get it. See, it just won't click it. Sorry, bear with me. We're trying to work through this. Oh, someone's gone. Let me try the next one. There we go. Martha Griege, are you there?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Thanks. You're good to go.
Okay. Also, my neighbor down the street here, he ran over here. Apparently, his phone is dead.
Oh, okay.
Good evening, Ms. Griege. Can you... Yeah, Ms. Griege, can you go ahead and state your name and your cross streets?
It's hard to understand you guys because of the speaker. I'm not sure what's going on. So can you repeat what you just said?
If you could just state your name and cross streets of your address for the record.
Okay. My cross streets is Kalamah and West Radcliffe.
Okay, you're all set. You can start your time now.
Okay. First of all, I would like to say that the city council, the survey that you had given all the 500 residents, I would like to know why are we still voting on that and wasting everybody's time? Because the residents spoke. And what was the sense of the survey if you're not going to abide by what they had said? The other, I mean, to me, that's a big disappointment. And then the other thing is, the lady in red that said that she had never seen anything at Jason Park, dog versus dog or humans. My dog was actually bit at Jason. I have seen fights at Jason. I live a block from Jason. I've seen dogs run after other people. I've seen dogs take food from kids. So for you to say that you don't see anything, I walk by there, I drive by there, every day, three, four times a day. The other thing is that the fence around the playground, that's looking for a lawsuit. If my child was injured and I would have to jump a fence in order to get to my child, that would be, I would be very upset and have a lawsuit for Inglewood. And the other thing I would like to say is that I have talked to Inglewood on leash. And there's been a couple of them have said that they will continue to harass city council until they get what they want, and they're not going to let you guys go. And that's going to be by emails, because apparently somebody had 400 emails, and phone calls. And so to me, it's like, you need to stand up and go with what Inglewood wants. I've lived here for 38 years, and I would like to see the kids enjoy the parks and not have to worry about dogs coming after them. I don't think I have any more else, anything else to share, but if you put a fence, I would like to have it permanent. So where everybody can enjoy the park and not have to worry about dogs coming to us at all. And I guess that would be all I have to say.
Okay, great. And is your neighbor Gary Mays, and is he there? Does he still want to take his time?
My time and then do his time.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Griege before we move to Mr. Mays, was it? Any questions from council? Seeing none. Thank you very much, Ms. Griege.
So I'm confused. Does he want to talk from her phone?
That's the way I understood it. Did you want to clarify?
Okay. Is Mr. Mays on the phone?
Can you hear me?
Nope.
Mr. Mays, are you there?
Did he call in?
Mr. Mays, can you... I hear him in the background. Mr. Mays, are you there?
Yeah, it just won't...
Can you hear me? This is Gary.
There we go.
All right. If you could just state your name and address for the record, please?
Sure. Gary Mays, 4350 South Loggall.
Okay, great. You're all set.
Okay. I don't know how long these fights have been going on, and I have been involved in the beginning. beginning. Well, as I know that Sunday night, I walked my grandchildren to the playground. I wasn't aware about this open leash thing. And I walked from Oxford to the playground. So, excuse me, Quincy, to the playground. So basically, what I did is I walked across the dog park, not knowing, and putting my two grandchildren into danger. No signs, no anything. I had no clue about this. So I just have a question for City Council, and they take it long and hard about this. Do you want children at the park or not? It's very simple. Zero or one, yes or no. I'll go with the decision either way, but I need to know. You know, the dogs, like I said, we walked across the dog park, the park came, the dog came running after me, just about knocked me down. That's my fault, I guess, because I didn't know there was a dog park right there. The other thing is that I understand you're trying to be a democracy, but you have a fiscal responsibility to the single city of Inglewood. If something was happening to my grandchildren, I'm not going after the dog owner. I'm going after the city of Inglewood. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mays. Any questions for Mr. Mays from council? Don't see any. Mr. Mays, thank you very much for speaking tonight. We will be providing comments at the end of this meet, or at the end of public comment regarding off-leash parks.
Okay, we have one final caller. There is not a name attached, but it begins with 720-849. If you could just unmute yourself.
Have they muted themselves?
No. Yeah, we've asked them several times. Nope. So it's not coming off of mute.
Thank you, City Clerk, so is that Carlisle? I can't do it. I'm not gonna try anymore. Anyway, any other unscheduled public comments?
That concludes public comment.
Perfect. Thank you very much. And so I will respond to public comment. I believe it was, are we getting off-leash parks except for one? I'll start with Mr. Cohen regarding the building code. Mr. Cohen, thank you very much for coming and speaking tonight. Is Mr. Cohen still here? Don't see him. But I do appreciate you speaking to it. Obviously, we are going through the UDC rewrite, and your comments are always appreciated. And I really appreciate the links as well. But obviously, some of the comments that you mentioned are things that many residents are experiencing within the city in terms of just rising costs, and, you know, no longer being able to afford the place that they live. And Inglewood is no different than many of the municipalities around us. So do really appreciate your comments, and I will be looking through the links, and hopefully that we could come up with a new UDC that benefits more of our residents here in Inglewood. Regarding the off-leash parks, Mr. Gilbert, thank you very much for coming tonight. Ms. Deal, Ms. Winston, Mr. Lukowski, Mr. Kelly, Ms. Griege, and Mr. Mays. Yeah, obviously, the task force for off-leash parks last met, I believe it was last week. We are expecting that to come back in front of council, and I believe that's gonna be coming in front of us in July in terms of just what was discussed during that meeting. And obviously, I know that the residents of the city want to hear a decision about where we stand in terms of the off-leash parks here in the city. So we don't have a date on when that decision's gonna be made, but I will be keeping the citizens up to date on when we do get that on the agenda. So it's not gonna be in July, it'll probably be a month after that or so. So I'll definitely keep it posted, but I appreciate all the comments tonight regarding how you feel about our off-leash parks here in the city. Thank you. And that concludes public comments. So moving on to item nine, consent agenda items. I didn't see any emails about removing any items from consent agenda items. So without any removal, can we get approval for the consent agenda items 9B1, 9C1, 9C2, 9C3, and 9C4?
I move to approve consent agenda items 9B1, 9C1, 2, 3, and 4.
Could I get a second? I second. Any comments? Seeing none, please vote.
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Questa?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Sierra?
Aye.
Member Ward?
Aye.
Let the record show five ayes.
Thank you. Moving on to item 11, since there are no public hearing items tonight, ordinance resolutions and motions. First up is the approval ordinance of the crossing agreement with Excel Energy. Staff recommends City Council approve a bill for ordinance authorizing the city of Inglewood to grant a temporary City Ditch crossing agreement to Excel Energy to allow installation of a new one and a quarter gas service line over City Ditch at the Swedish Medical Center complex. Speaking on the subject tonight is Deputy Director of the Engineering Utilities, Mr. Steve Simon. Good evening, Mr. Simon.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Protem and council. This item for consideration, pardon me, this item for consideration is a temporary crossing agreement requested by Excel Energy, the purpose of which is to provide a temporary permission to install a one-and-a-half-inch gas line to a new building as part of the Swedish Hospital Complex expansion. Terms of this agreement specify that Excel Energy or its contractor will be responsible for any damage to person or property as a result of the work. Fortunately, this location is near the downstream terminus of City Ditch. There's only actually two contract users downstream from this. At this location, the ditch is about six feet deep. We have a requirement for 18 inches of separation between City Ditch and any other infrastructure, so it will be able to be installed above it via horizontal directional drilling, which is a common installation method for this type of construction. If the pipe operations were to become compromised as a result of the work, it will not impact Inglewood's raw water deliveries. We are the only user of the ditch that uses it as a treated water source. All others are contract users for irrigation source. So it will not impact Inglewood's raw water supply nor the majority of the contract users. Staff will be on site to inspect and oversee the work. Staff believes the work can be done with minimal risk to the city and recommends approval of the crossing agreement. And thank you, Mayor. I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much, Director, Deputy Director Simon. Any questions from council? No questions at all? May I get a motion to approve? Council Bill 25.
I move to approve CB 25.
Could I get a second? I second. So that's Anderson and Sierra. Any comments? Please vote.
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Questa?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Sierra?
Aye.
Member Ward?
Aye.
Let the record show five ayes.
Thank you very much. Moving on to 11B1, Council Bill 21, a perpetual non-exclusive easement for the transmission and distribution of electricity and related communication signals on, over, under, and across the following described premises at Bellevue Park. Speaking on the matter is Manager of Open Space, Mr. Dave Lee. And I see it's Director Underhill.
Hi, council. Dave's actually on the call if there's any specific questions for this, but again, it's for Excel Energy to have a non-exclusive easement through Bellevue Park to update their infrastructure going through the park.
Thank you, Director Underhill. Any questions? Member Russell?
I just wanted to know if we found anything out about the 5G. Is it definitely not 5G?
Councilmember Russell, it is not 5G as far as communications is concerned that's related to electricity infrastructure. It's not communications.
Okay, thank you.
If I could just add to that, there is a communications line that they are building, but it's a hard line. It's not 5G. It has nothing to do with anything that's broadcast. It's a, that's why the council or the council communication mentioned communications. It's a hard wire that is allowing Excel to talk to different stations.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? If not, can I get a motion to approve? Council Bill 21?
I move to approve Council Bill 21.
Thank you, Member Ward. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Member Anderson. Any comments from council? Seeing none, please vote.
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Questa?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Sierra?
Aye.
Member Ward?
Aye.
Let the record show five ayes.
Thank you. Moving on to Council Bill 23, memorandum of understanding between the city of Inglewood and the Colorado State Patrol to share license plate reader information. Present is Division Chief Vance Fender. Or is he online? Do we have anyone to speak on the matter? But staff recommends City Council approve an ordinance for memorandum of understanding between the city of Inglewood and the Colorado State Patrol to share license plate reader information and to have the capability to query all LPR-based information from around the state of Colorado.
Mayor, Mayor Protem, I apologize that we don't have this proper staff member here. If you are comfortable moving ahead, we can do that, or we can table to the next meeting. My apologies.
Thank you, City Manager Lewis. Do we have any questions from City Council? Member Russell, go ahead.
Did this pass unanimously last time?
Let me take a look at the minutes from last week.
I believe it did. Yeah, I can look at the minutes real quick.
Taking a look right now. It did. It went, yeah, 5-0.
So it probably should have been, oh, maybe it wasn't on consent agenda because there were people that were not here.
That is correct.
That could be.
Thank you.
Member, Member Questa?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I am comfortable proceeding tonight without Commander Fender to speak if council is also comfortable doing so.
Thank you, Member Questa, for that comment. I too am in favor of moving forward tonight if council is also set to vote. All right. Member Russell?
I think Member Anderson was not here either, so I think we should let him weigh in.
Thank you, Member Russell. Member Anderson?
Yeah, I'm comfortable moving forward. I watched the meeting and was supportive of it, even though I didn't get a chance to vote, so I'm fine moving forward.
Appreciate it, Member Anderson. Can I get a motion to approve? Council Bill 23?
I move to approve CB 23.
Thank you, Member Anderson. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Member Ward. Any comments? Please vote.
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Questa?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Sierra?
Aye.
Member Ward?
Aye.
Let the record show five ayes.
Thank you very much, everyone. Moving on to resolutions and motion, 11C1, resolution of the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA certification process. Speaking on the matter is Director of Finance Jackie Lowe and Finance Manager Kevin Ingles. I see what they're doing to me tonight.
Well, Division Chief Fender was right outside, but apparently he didn't make it in.
So staff recommends City Council to approve a resolution for the certification filing for the ARPA funding application of $8.776 million. And...
Mayor, Mayor Protem, I will take this item. The federal government guidance for the American Rescue Plan Act requires that city councils essentially apply for the funding, and it's really a technicality that's needed from each city council that wants to access those funds. So we are doing that through DOLA. DOLA will actually be cutting the check. Your certification of the application will allow us to access the first tranche, which is 4.3 million, a little over 4 million. And so tonight, we're just asking you for that certification.
Thank you, City Manager Lewis. Any questions from City Council? Member Russell?
Actually, this is a question, but maybe even more so a comment. In reading through this, the one thing, I don't know if we're considering this, but I would like to see the city's essential workers receive additional compensation for work already performed. Because apparently, we do have some employees that were essential and could not, I mean, a lot of the employees worked from home, but there were a lot of employees that were working here that couldn't take time off. So is it legal to compensate them from some of this money?
Great question, Member Russell. That is an eligible expenditure under ARPA, and, but tonight, we actually won't be making any decisions or don't have to make any decisions about how we spend that. We do plan to come back to you with regard to how that's spent, so that's great feedback. The item before you is just the certification, but we are glad to entertain that, and we will bring that back to you. I think the study session is upcoming.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Russell. Any other questions? Seeing none, may I get a motion to approve?
I move to approve, where are we at? C1, something?
11C1.
11C1.
Could I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ward. Any other comments? Seeing none, please vote.
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Questa?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Sierra?
Aye.
Member Ward?
Aye.
Let the record show five ayes.
Thank you very much. Moving on to 11C2, approval of a contract to construct the South Akoma Street Drainage Improvements Phase 1 project in the South Inglewood Drainage Basin Project S3A. Speaking on the subject is Capital Project Manager Tim Hosts and Capital Project Engineer Mr. Hosts, I always struggle with your name, but looks like I got it right this time.
So, good to see you all in person again. Nice to be here. Thanks for having us. I'm here with our Capital Project Engineer Devin Keener. We've got a brief PowerPoint presentation here to go over this project to construct storm drainage improvements in the South Inglewood Storm Drainage Basin. So I'll get started here with a little bit of background, and then Devin will go into more of the details about the project. I go the wrong way. There we go. So the purpose of the project, this project is focused in the South Inglewood Drainage Basin, as I mentioned. That's primarily in the upper end of that basin. It's east of Cherokee Street and south of Tufts Avenue is where these improvements will be constructed. The improvements have been designed for a 25-year rain event storm design with an allowance for an agent surface ponding at the inlets involved in this project. So the overall goal is obviously to create a safer environment for people in the area during large storm events. So a little bit about the project background here. As you know, we've done several different studies to come to this point here we're at tonight, to start constructing some improvements that have been recommended in our stormwater master plan that was finalized in 2019. I think there was 34 different capital improvement projects recommended in the master plan. This project we're presenting here tonight is one of the top priorities. That's why we've focused on that and got it ready to construct. There's also been two other recent studies done that helped us guide our decisions here and where we're at tonight. The Caliber Engineering Report that was completed in 2019 was another, more of a master plan type of document that looked at all the different drainage basins in the city and which priorities in each basin were the most important to get done and kind of categorize and prioritize those for us. And this project this evening came out on top in that as well. And then we also, after the Caliber Report was done and kind of directed us into the South Inglewood Basin, we hired a firm called Ulteq Engineering to do another report for us that looked into more of the details of this basin and kind of the existing infrastructure we have out there and what we can utilize and how we can maybe improve on that to carry the 25-year capacity that we need to carry there. So that was really how we got down to the design criteria here and the specific improvements we're recommending with this project. So this next slide, it's just kind of a breakdown between the Caliber and the Ulteq studies just to kind of, to show the difference between the two. They both were for a 25-year design rain event. And the different study types of the Caliber Report was, as I said, more of a high-level master plan type of study. It didn't really give a lot of, didn't consider the existing infrastructure we have out there, all the piping and inlets we have that helps the water get to the main trunk lines we have. So the Ulteq Report did a much more detailed study. They actually looked at 120 different inlets that are out there that actually carry water to the trunk lines. So it definitely more detailed and gave us a lot more specific information about how to construct the necessary improvements. And obviously, the cost there was a lot less with the Ulteq study. They were able to determine that the existing system did have some capacity there to help us there, and we didn't have to increase the main line trunk size immediately. So we were able to utilize what we have there for now, and there is going to be the eight-inch surface ponding at the inlets there. But the system can handle that. There will be no, nothing beyond the eight-inch surface ponding around the inlet. So basically, a lot of smaller detention ponds is what those will be as the water works its way through the existing system, through the new improvements as well. And then really, the only, the only, only con for the Cal, or the Ulteq study was the, the surcharging in the system, but we feel comfortable that the system can handle that, and it should be able to function just fine with that. So, so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Devin here. He's going to go a little more into the, the design of the specific project and the specific improvements that are included in this project, and then we'll be happy to answer any questions you have about this item.
Yeah, thank you, Tim. As Tim said, my name is Devin Keener, Capital Project Engineer here at the city. I took a little bit larger role in the actual design of, of this project here that we are preparing to bring to construction here next month. So we utilized the recommendations in Ulteq's final design report. And then we hired an outside consultant, EST, and they designed two-thirds of the construction plans we received, and then I designed the other one-third. So then we got a final set of construction plans ready. And then we went and we, we bid those out, and that's what we're looking to, you know, get approval for, you know, this contract to, to get built. But some other things here on, on the project design, as Tim said, that there is, there is some surcharging here out at the right-of-way. We hope that it's, it's only going to be eight inches high, and we did a, we did a survey of that flooding to make sure that that eight-inch depth was just going to stay within the right-of-way. So within city-owned property, that eight inches is not going to go out on our citizens' property and affect them. So the survey that we conducted based on the construction plans that we got shows that all of the water during a 25-year event is going to be contained within the right-of-way. And then lastly, on this slide, we advertised the bid publicly. Any contractor that was interested, you know, in bidding on the work was able to do so. Move on to the next slide here. So this is just kind of an overview of what Phase One of this project is, is going to look like. There's two phases to this project. First, we're discussing Phase One. This is the one we're looking to construct here soon. It's going to include 800 linear feet of a new and up-sized storm pipe. You can see on the slideshow there, that line in blue is the new and up-sized storm sewer pipe. So it's going to be enlarged from 30 inches in diameter to 36 to 48 inches in diameter. We're also adding 14 new and up-sized inlets. We're adding seven new and up-sized manholes, and then two concrete alley pads, and with curb walls to contain flow within the alleys. So these two concrete alley pads are basically where we noticed there's serious flooding along the alleys of South Inglewood Street. And the best way to contain that flooding, we found, was to build, you know, build these concrete alley pads, which will basically be a small kind of detention pond that'll drain the water out before it goes over to into our residents' properties. And I'll speak a little bit more about these alley inlet upgrades here on this slide. So as I said before, it's going to be on South Inglewood Street. We also have some improvements on South Sherman Street's East Alley. We're just going to be increasing the size of the inlet there. But the more major improvements that we're doing on alleys is going to be on South Inglewood Street. So we're doing inlet upsizing on all three alleys, and then we're going to install the concrete apron, and then we're going to add concrete alley curbs. And like I said earlier, it's going to be kind of like a mini detention pond that's going to slowly release the water out. That way, we can keep the water in city-owned property, and then it won't spill out over into our, into our residents' property. And then, as discussed before, this is Phase Two of the, of the project. We'd look to construct this later this fall or early winter. This is going to include a little bit more stormwater pipe. So you see, we got 800 linear feet of stormwater pipe here on Phase One. And Phase Two is going to have 2,000 linear feet of new and up-sized storm sewer pipe. It's going to range in diameter from 18 inches to 76 inches. The largest pipe that we're going to be putting in on Phase Two is going to be up there at Tufts and Bannock. That's going to be 70, 76 to 86 inches in diameter, depending on which pipe we eventually use. We're going to be putting in three new and up-sized inlets and six new and up-sized manholes. No alley improvements on, on this Phase Two project. This is Phase One construction, just kind of what we can expect it to look like out there. And this is a photo that you're seeing with that excavator is what it's going to look like out at Union and, and Inglewood here from July through October. Things to expect, you know, for, you know, for our citizens to expect is that our, our construction hours, you know, are from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. There's going to be, you know, some noise. Obviously, you know, when we're digging into the streets here, we're going to try and be quick, get in, get out the best that we can. Heavy machinery, as, as shown, there's going to be some traffic disruption. Temporary no parking signs put on the street. And then there's going to be some temporary alley closures, but we're going to have the contractor notify all of our citizens where they're doing work to ensure, you know, that they know when to move their cars. We'll let them know if they can use the alley this day, or when their street's going to be closed. So they're going to be notified well ahead of time as to what work is coming, so that they'll know, you know, when to, you know, when to move their cars, or how they can access their homes. And just talking a little bit about the contractor selection process here, this is just kind of like standard of what we do here at the city. So we published a public invitation for bid, and we received three bids back on this. We reviewed the bids for completeness and errors, as always. We checked their references. We asked for, for references, resumes, I'm sorry. And we just checked all their, all their background, previous, you know, job history, and we felt that they're a competent contractor, the one that we've selected. And they've done a lot of similar work like this, and we think that they're going to be able to produce a good final product for the city and for our citizens.
Thank you very much, Mr. Manager Hoss, Hoss, and Capital Project Engineer, Mr. Keener. Any questions from city council? Member Russell?
Thank you. I have a few. Have the downstream upgrades been completed in S1 and S2?
So those are currently under design now. The, the reason we can move forward with these upstream ones is we've got the open channel there between Cherokee over to Rotolo Park there that kind of breaks up this into two different basins, basically, so we can, and the other reason we can construct this is because we're not going to be enlarging the pipe coming out of Cherokee there on the upstream end of the Green Belt. So it's going to be the same maximum flow of water, it's just going to flow a little bit longer. So it won't be an increased maximum flow rate, but it will be a longer, longer time period, but the flow rate's the same, so we're comfortable that the existing downstream system won't be affected by these improvements until we can get them constructed.
So has the drain at the bottom of Rotolo Park been repaired where there were sinkholes on Jason at the bottom of Rotolo Park?
Yes, that was, that was repaired last year with our, we did, when we cleaned out the Oxford pipe, that was part of that project. We did the repair of the, the outlet structure there, as well as the bottom of the pipe there. That's all been sealed off now, so we're comfortable that it can handle the flows.
Okay, thank you. And then I have some specific questions back on, these don't have pages, but, so when it's, it's on the Caliber versus Ulteq Study Breakdown where it says it assumes slight surcharging in existing trunk line pipes. Are, so are those the pipes in the street on Inglewood?
That is the Inglewood drain that, that runs from the low spot in Inglewood out to Tufts over to Cherokee and that out into the open area there. So that is that main trunk line there we're talking about. The, mainly the one in Tufts Avenue is the one that's going to be surcharged. The one in Inglewood, surprisingly, is actually large enough to handle the flow without surcharging, but the one in Tufts will need a little bit of push there to get the water through there. But it is, the level of water will stay below the level of the manhole, so it'll all stay underground and work its way through there. That, that's the, kind of the time factor there. It's going to take a little longer to work its way through, but we, the results of the studies show that we can get the water through there. If we give it a little more time, there, it will flow through the existing pipe.
So the blue pipes, the blue lines, you're replacing those, correct?
So the blue pipes are actually new pipes. Those are predominantly new pipes that are going to be added to the existing system to kind of redirect some of the water and take it a little more efficiently through the existing system. Most of the blue pipes there, I think, on this phase are all new pipes.
Okay, so, and my biggest concern is where they are putting in the two inlets on Inglewood at the low spot, especially on the west side of the street. And then if you go to the alley on the west side of Inglewood, between Inglewood and Bannock, and you're going to put two, two more inlets in the alley there, are you doing something with that pipe? Because I was told by the previous Public Works Director that the alley between Inglewood and Bannock is the dead end, and the water going into that drain was actually going back out to Inglewood. So now you're having double drains in the alley and double drains on Inglewood Street. Is it going to create more of a problem?
So we feel, we have studied that pipe there. It's a concern. We definitely looked into there. I agree. That was something we looked at. The, the issue we had before, I think that the pipe was actually full of sediment there mostly, and it was basically clogged, that it wasn't, the full capacity wasn't available in the previous storm event that happened over there. So we, the pipes have been cleaned out now, and, and we've looked at the, the capacity of the existing pipe versus the, the new inlet capacity, and they match up to where we feel the, the pipe is big enough to handle the increased inlet capacity in that area, assuming that we keep the pipe clean and, and able to use the full capacity of that existing pipe. So that was fortunate that we don't have to replace that pipe. We feel like this, this will work by having the pipe back to its original capacity there, and the increased inlet will be able to, it can handle the water from the new inlet size.
Okay, I can tell you that that particular spot is the focal point of where the major damage was in that flood. And there's going to be, I mean, those people are paranoid, especially the person that lives on Inglewood Street. And, and my other question is, how much inconvenience is there going to be? Because she has no garage, she can't park in the alley, and she can't park on the street when you're doing all of that work, and she lives in the middle of the block.
So, yeah, so I went back to this slide here with the alley and the upgrades. What we do have there, we, we're putting this curbing in here to keep the water in the alley better, so it doesn't flow across the private properties there. And that, where the curbing's going, there are no driveways or any fence, or any gates or anything like that. It's all just kind of in between lots there, so it'll all contain it within the alley and not block any driveways. I mean, during the construction, there's obviously going to be a little bit of inconvenience as they're installing these improvements and the concrete and things, but it, there is a purposeful curb there to contain that water in the alley to prevent that from happening again. That is something we looked at, and that's the reason why this curbing is here, as well as, as this apron. The apron is there to keep a lot of the dirt from going into the pipe anymore as it washes, because obviously, the alley's dirt. So we have that larger apron there to, to try to filter some of that out before it does go into the inlet. So it has been considered there that, that situation you're describing is something we've addressed with these plans, with this curbing and this concrete apron.
Right, and then just one more thing. The house to, on, on Bannock, two houses up the hill from the alley, the basement was flooded with water. And she asked the engineer from Ulteq how the water got up there. He could not explain it, and he told her the only thing that can protect your house is to put your house on stilts, and it is a lot higher than the two houses at the bottom of the alley. So I just, the people in that area are very concerned.
Oh, we, and we are as well. We definitely took that into consideration. The, the biggest benefit of these improvements is we are able to control the flow of the water a lot better, so it doesn't go across people's property and into their homes and basements. And we feel like with these improvements, that the water will get into the storm sewer system a lot more efficiently and be able to work its way through the storm system and stay in the public right-of-way and out of the, the private properties like it did before. We feel like this is a much more controlled system now, that we can make sure the water goes in where it needs to. And we've looked at the, the Ulteq study looked at all the, where the water's trying to get into the system, and which inlets are too small, and we've, we've addressed those with this program here, that we think the, the water will definitely work its way through the, the area a lot more efficiently and without the destruction that we saw before.
So I appreciate that, and I appreciate all you're doing. I just want to make sure that the contractor communicates, especially with the person whose property is going to be impacted most by what you're doing in the alley and on the street.
Yeah, and that is, that is part of our process, is that we'll get a notice upfront, and then as the contractor works out there, they will be talking to each individual person if they're blocking their driveway, or they need to, to move their car or whatever. That's kind of a case-by-case basis. They will be out there doing that. And that is, as you said, that's very important to make sure people can come and go when they need to and know how to get access to the property during the work.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Member Russell. Member Anderson?
Thank you for the presentation, Mr. Hoss and Mr. Keener. How does this price, the 831,000, kind of stack up against the expectation that, I, I don't remember what the total price was for this work estimated after the Ulteq study, but I do think there was, there was kind of an estimate. Are we, are we within that range?
So actually, the bids did come in a little higher than we expected. I think we were around, what was it, 600 or so, and the bids around 830. So it was a, I think the prices are going up a little bit with the, the price of materials and labor and things are increasing the prices than we've historically seen on this. But we did get all three bids within 100,000 of each other, so we feel comfortable that this is a, a fair price. We had three different bidders looking at it, and they all came up with about the same number. But it was a little higher than we expected, but it's still significantly less than the Caliber estimates for the trunk line. These improvements will, will cost less and still accomplish the same purpose there. So we, we feel comfortable that this is a reasonable cost for the improvements that are proposed.
Okay, very good. This, the second question I had was what, which portions did, we said with a split where two-thirds was designed by contractor and two-thirds was designed in-house? What, what portions and why did we, we split it up that way?
I'll let Devin speak to that.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it was just an issue of, of experience. So we let the contractor design the things that I haven't had experience with doing, which is more of the pipe design, some stuff that, you know, might affect utilities going down Union and, and Inglewood. And then I focused a little bit more on the inlets and inlet connections, and then designing the, the curb, concrete aprons. One of the designs is in, in the slide here. That's a plan view there, but that's why we, why we broke it up.
Good, very good. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Member Anderson. Member Ward?
So I apologize to my fellow council members in advance who may have heard this term, but I'm not familiar with the term surcharging. Can you explain what that is to me, please?
Sure, that's a, what that refers to, there's going to be a slight pressure on the pipe. The, the water is going to build up into the manholes about two or three feet as it works its way through the system. So there's a bit of, you know, normally in a gravity pipe, you wouldn't have any kind of pressure, or you'd have, it'd be open, basically, they call it open channel. You know, there's a little bit of air at the top of the pipe to allow the water. This is going to be a bit of buildup in the pipe, and it, what that does is it helps push the water through the pipe and allows us to use the existing pipe we have to, to carry this water. So it, and it takes a little longer to get the water through there, but it does still work its way through, and then that's how we're comfortable with doing the upper end of this process, because we're not going to increase that maximum flow rate coming out of the pipe. But it is, I always call it, it's kind of a push. You kind of have to push the water through a little bit. It'll build up a little bit, and the, the eight inch at each inlet is technically a surcharge as well. That's a little bit of, you know, elevation on there that's kind of a bit of pressure that's pushing that water down into that inlet and through the pipe for us. So that's, surcharging is essentially, it's a slight, slight charge on the pipe or pressure on the pipe to force its way through there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Member Ward. Member Anderson, do you have another question? Any other questions from council? If not, can I get a motion for approval for eleven C two?
I move to approve eleven C two.
Thank you, Member Anderson. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Member Ward. Any additional comments from council? If not, I'll just weigh in. I'm really happy that we're finally moving forward with an aspect of all the stormwater, um, conversations that we've had over the past couple of years. Obviously, this was an area that was most affected, and I second the concerns that Member Russell has brought up in terms of just the improvements that we need to see as part of this area. So really looking forward to this, and, um, yeah, I appreciate all the work from staff and getting us in this position. So, if, uh, no further comments, please vote.
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Questa?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Sierra?
Aye.
Member Ward?
Aye.
Let the record show five ayes.
Thank you. Um, I guess we just moved forward. I guess now we're on to item twelve, general discussion, mayor's choice. Um, this item is on here. There's an upcoming apartment association, basically a meeting greet with, uh, Apartment Association of Metro Denver this Monday from eight to nine AM. Uh, just wanted to make everyone aware of it. Uh, I'm not sure if I'm able to make it in attendance, but I was just, wanted to bring it to your attention and just see if you were able to make that meeting greet on Monday morning. Just more of a comment, but. Member Ward?
So I actually brought this up to the city manager, which is why it's on the agenda tonight. Uh, we all, I believe, got an email invite, and I, I'm, haven't been sure how we respond to those previously, but, uh, I am planning on attending this. Um, I don't see any harm in going to a meeting greet and talking to, uh, the people who represent our higher-density, um, property owners in the city. So I, I intend to attend.
Thank you, Member Ward. And actually, I did want to stay, I spoke to city manager Louis earlier today. This has been posted, so if there are going to be more than, uh, three or more council members there, just know that we have posted this meeting. Um, any other comments or anything else to add?
I just want to note that, uh, the meeting is being held at Kent Place Residences, so it won't be held here.
Thank you very much, city clerk. I guess I'll just do the rest of my items in terms, uh, under mayor's choice. Actually, so I just wanted to state, so there's going to be no study session next week since we are going to be, uh, celebrating the citizen of the year next week. Um, and I believe is the meeting at Malle? It's at Malle Center. So, uh, starting at six o'clock, if I remember correctly, but I'll have to look at the calendar. But, uh, there will be no study session next week. And also, I wanted to thank, uh, staff, Madeline Hinkfuss, and, um, just communications in terms of just putting together the neighborhood nights. I was at the Cushing Park last, uh, Friday. Um, pretty nice turnout. Got to see, uh, people, and I got to see, uh, or got to eat ice cream with my son, so for a sweet house. I'm really enjoying the food trucks. Was the first one I made, and I believe that the next one's going to be in August. Uh, I don't believe that there's anything on the schedule for July. And actually, I'll just make a quick note that I did the Jeremy Bittner run this past Saturday. Ran with, uh, Member Questa, different races, but we both ran and we're still feeling it. Uh, but I appreciate staff and I appreciate, um, all the officers from different municipalities that came out and, and were at the event. Uh, and obviously, we, uh, here in council, obviously support our, uh, police department and everything that they do and everything that they do with every interaction that they have with the public. So really appreciate what you guys do. Uh, nothing else for me tonight. And, uh, moving on to twelve B ones, council member's choice. I guess we'll start off with the proclamation, the review of the proclamation that's on it. And, Member Anderson, did you want to speak to the proclamation that's in front of us?
Yes, thank you. And I'll give, I'll give just a little bit of background on this. Um, when, when we started having discuss, some discussions about the process for proclamations and, um, where, you know, who, who can propose a proclamation and, um, and what kind of proclamation should we be doing, I started thinking about if I was going to bring forward a proclamation that is something I highly value, and I think often proclamations are just an expression of things that the city or city council values. Um, this is kind of what bubbled to, to the surface as something important for me, and I know for many constituents, um, this last year. So this is a liberty proclamation, and, um, I, I kind of drafted this myself, just reflecting on, on this last year. And I think we're in a year where, um, it's really important to kind of put an exclamation point on liberty. Um, and I didn't write this proclamation to, um, I, I have some, some stuff in here about, uh, different restrictions that we had this last year. And I'm not, I'm not out to have an argument about whether or not those were valid or something like that. The point, I think, here is that, um, we had restrictions on, on liberty, and many of these liberties were liberties that are protected in, in the Bill of Rights, um, over this last year. Freedom of assembly, freedom of religion in a variety of different ways. Whether they were justified or not, under the circumstances, I think is, is kind of an open question. But regardless, coming out of a pandemic, I think it's important to say, no, that was temporary, you know? That's not the way we want life to be. And as government officials, I think it's important to remind our citizens that we want you to love and celebrate, um, the liberties that are, are, um, are provided to us by, uh, by, and it says in the, endowed by, by our creator in the Declaration of Independence, similar language in the state constitution. So I think this is just a chance to put a big explanation, exclamation mark on the Fourth of July this year. That's why I'm proposing this, this proclamation. And I, I hope I wrote it in such a way that everyone feels like it's not attacking a particular point of view. And I know it was, it was a tense year in many ways. I'm not trying to attack a, a particular point of view, but say, hey, regardless of where you sit on that stuff, now's the time to, to kind of return our focus to the liberties that we have in this country. So with that, I do have a couple of changes. This was, I proposed this, sent it to staff on May seventh, and according to our policy, it probably should have been on last week's agenda and then voted on this week so that we could get it, um, done before the Fourth of July. I understand it's a new policy, things slip through the cracks. Um, that's, that's totally understandable this first time around, but I do want to propose a couple of changes to it just because of the timing. And one is that under, um, the first point is, instead of proclaim Sunday, July four, twenty twenty-one, Independence Day, we'll be on, this will be on, for vote on July sixth, which is after. So I don't, I don't think that really works. So I would, I would suggest proclaim the month of July, Liberty Month in Inglewood. Let's just have a, a whole month of liberty. And, um, and, and that'll, I think that'll still work, still send the message, even if it's after the Fourth of July. Um, and then the other thing I'd like to do is remove the sixth whereas, since we haven't yet rescinded our pandemic emergency ordinance, um, and even though I, we may vote on it that night, if I understand correctly, for first reading, um, uh, but even so, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be comfortable with this on here until we've had second reading anyway. So I think the statement still stands, even if we just remove the sixth whereas statement on that. And with that, I'm certainly open to any other feedback, any, any other council members have on the liberty proclamation. Thank you, Mayor Potem.
Thank you, Member Anderson. Uh, any comments from council? Any questions?
Just a couple of what I believe are typographical errors. Uh, but I don't know if now's the appropriate time, if you're planning on amending this or not.
Feel free to voice your changes.
So in the paragraph that lists, uh, the COVID issues, whereas space covering requirements, business closures, uh, at the end of that list, I think there should be an and between curfews and capacity limitations. And then in the next paragraph, the wrong usage of affect or effect is there. Permanently effect, effect is a noun, should be affect, the verb with an A.
Anything else, Member Ward? Member Questa?
Thanks, sir. And thank you, Member Anderson. I appreciate you bringing this forward. Uh, so procedurally, are we voting on this tonight, or is this just for discussion, and then we come back for a vote at a, at a later meeting?
Thank you, Member Questa. Um, honestly, I, I don't think that we really fleshed out exactly what this process is. Um, I, I believe, you know, if, if there's consensus to move it forward to, uh, July sixth, uh, we would do so at that time. I wasn't even sure whether or not we wanted to make changes tonight. Um, so I think right now we're kind of just, uh, making it as we go, but I guess member, or city manager Louis, if you have anything to add in terms of what the process is tonight for the proclamation?
Well, just to remind you that your new proclamation policy does require a review of the, it, it's kind of vague on what that review looks like, but essentially, it's whether or not to forward it to council for a vote at the, at the following meeting.
Thank you.
I, I, one more follow-up. Did we change the vote threshold on proclamations? I can't recall where that went, so it's just for?
It would still be majority, yeah. Uh, city attorney?
Uh, yes, I just wanted to add that the, um, council policy and procedure manual also speaks to, um, how a cancel, council member choice item can become an agenda item. And, um, specifically to council member Questa's question, um, if, if there was a vote tonight, there would be a vote to put this on the July sixth agenda. Because there's, the manual lists three things that can happen once a, uh, council member brings up an item under council member's choice. Um, a council member may request staff research the matter, um, and, and complete a council request. A council member may make a motion to bring an unscheduled matter introduced during community comment to a future study session, or then the third that I already referenced. A council member can make a motion to bring an unscheduled item to a future agenda.
Thank you. Anything else, Member Questa? Thank you, uh, city attorney Niles. Member Anderson?
So with that, I mean, with, I, I, I thought with our proclamation policy that, um, it was going to be discussion and then go, you know, go to a vote unless there was objections to it maybe, or something like that. I, um, I'm happy to make a motion to put this on the agenda if that's appropriate, or if we just have consensus, maybe that's sufficient.
Thank you, Member Anderson. Uh, Member Russell?
Actually, I'm kind of surprised that was in the policy manual that way, because I did think that we, our items that we would bring up could actually be voted on, on the night we brought them up, depending on what they were.
Yeah, city manager Louis?
Exactly what, um, city attorney Niles read is correct. However, you did create a new policy that, that does have this one week in advance review for proclamations. So I think that's why we were anticipating that you would follow the new, the new policy specific to proclamations for this particular discussion. And, and just conferring with the city attorney, we don't think that it matters whether it's by consensus or vote, whether you move this forward to the July sixth meeting.
Anything else, Member Russell? Member Anderson?
Could I just ask, uh, council for consensus to move this forward? Then I haven't really heard anybody weigh in on, weigh in on it.
So actually, I'll, I'll weigh in, because, um, the way that it's currently written, I would want some changes to it. Um, and, do you want me to go through my reasoning and to some of the items that I?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. So I, and I appreciate you bringing this forward, but, uh, one of the items was item six, since we haven't done the, uh, the emergency order yet. That was one item that I wanted to remove. I also have an issue with the third whereas. Uh, just the way that it's written, I just have an issue with the tone itself, and it does sound like you didn't have, uh, you know, the, in terms of the way that you, well, the way that I read it, I just don't like the tone of that, anything after the, the, the semicolon. So I did have an issue with that aspect of it. And also, uh, the fourth and the fifth whereas, I, I do see them as non-factual statements, and I guess it's just the way that I'm reading it. Um, so basically, the way that I read it is, you know, there are emergency powers, but, you know, based on precedents that have occurred, municipalities do have the ability to raise emergency orders. The state has the ability to raise emergency orders. Um, you know, there were items brought to the courts, and, you know, the one thing that I do remember was that there was, the, the Supreme Court did rule on, uh, the right of assembly, and that was overturned so that it, it didn't infringe on people's rights to assemble. So that aspect of it did get changed by the Supreme Court, but nothing was brought forward in terms of mass mandates, nothing was in terms of business closures. Those things were still considered lawful. So the way that I'm reading it is that some of these things are being stated that they're, you know, going against, you know, basically our courts and basically our judicial system, but they weren't. Same thing in the fifth whereas. I, I just see some of those items to be non-factual. So the way that they're currently written, I would not support as is. So, um, so that basically would be is I, the third whereas, I have an issue with anything after the semicolon, and then the fourth and the fifth whereas, I would just remove the way that it's currently written. So, Member Anderson? Oh, I'm sorry. Member Questa, I guess you were first. Okay, well, Member Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor Potem. I appreciate that. Um, I would be, uh, I, I didn't, um, the way I, I wrote or I understand what, you know, what those, the fourth and fifth whereas statements there, I didn't, I didn't mean for them to come across as saying those things were illegal or anything like that. They're just saying that there's a risk associated with, you know, temporary emergency things becoming permanent. And so not, not that they were, were, that, that, that those things are not appropriate, except under circumstances like perhaps a pandemic would, would provide the circumstance that would justify those, which is why that last line there is in the, the fifth whereas statement. But if, if there are, uh, if you have suggestions, I'd be certainly open to, to changes. I don't, I don't feel like I need to own this thing. I'd rather have something that is crafted in such a way that all, all of council can agree to it, to, to affirm these liberties. So I'm totally open to changes. I'm just not sure how I would go about changing it to satisfy the, the fourth and fifth whereas statement. The third whereas statement I would push back on, because those, those, uh, the statements, all of the statements in the third whereas statement are straight out of the Colorado Constitution, Article Two, Section Two, and Article Two, Section Three. Um, so the, you know, the, the tone there, if you have a problem with the tone in the whereas statement, then you have a problem with the Colorado Constitution as well. But on the fourth and fifth whereas statements, I totally understand where you're coming from and would, would happily clarify the language so that I'm not, you know, so that we're not saying something that I didn't intend to say or that you think, you know, that the way it's coming across to you as well.
Thank you, Member Anderson. I, I didn't have any rewrites as, as of this moment. Obviously, I believe if, when it comes back in front of us on July sixth, there could be a chance for us to rewrite it or make an amendment to the way that the proclamation is written. So I, I could come back with some examples then.
Very good.
At that point. And I guess I'll just ask is, uh, do we have consensus in terms of moving this forward for July sixth? Study set, or the regular meeting on July sixth? Member Questa?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Potem. I never mind putting anything forward to a vote, so sure. I'm happy to move it forward, and then we can, um, but we can discuss again then. So sure. I would agree to consensus on this.
Thank you, Member Questa. I, I agree with that as well. Uh, Member Russell?
Thank you. I am happy to bring this forward for a vote also. Thank you, Member Anderson, for your work on this.
We have consensus. Uh, Member Ward, do you want to weigh in?
No objection.
Sounds great. Um, thank you very much, Member Anderson. Uh, Member Anderson, do you want to kick us off with anything else for council member's choice? And feel free to add any items in terms of any boards or commissions that you've been in.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I have no reports on boards and commissions, because I was on vacation and missed all of them this time around, but, uh, I will certainly have an update after my next round of meetings with those boards and commissions. Um, a couple of, a couple of comments. Um, uh, first of all, the Neighborhood Rehab Project was this Saturday with seventy-five volunteers working on six projects. Um, got a lot of work done, and my thanks to, to city staff, um, neighbor, Neighborhood Resources Coordinator, Madeline Hinkfuss, did a great job organizing a lot of, a lot of the administrative stuff on the city side, so I really appreciate that. And, uh, city manager Louis led a project and did a fantastic, just a fantastic job leading that team as well with fifteen or twenty volunteers. He was loaded down with volunteers. So, um, all of our projects were, were completed successfully, and it was a blast. We had, we had a lot of fun. So I know this, this conflicted with the, the Bittner run, so several, several of you weren't able to, to make it, and I'm glad we had representative at both of those events going on this week. But it was, it was a lot of fun, and we are planning on doing another, um, service day in, uh, September, on September eleventh. So, um, and actually, hopefully, a few, even a few more projects than we did this. We're kind of ramping back up from, you know, we kind of cut, pulled back last year, and so hopefully do eight or nine projects. and so hopefully do eight or nine projects in September. One council request, and it's just, that is, I was wondering on the legality of parking RVs on the street and occupied RVs. Is that, is that against code? And what, what would a citizen do about it if that, if that was going on in their neighborhood? The other thing is, or this is in the council request, but perhaps just a, just a question for the city manager. What is the, we voted on, I think, Little Dry Creek Plaza improvements for our unassigned fund balance. What's the status on that, the timeline for, for some of that? Is that moving forward? Just out of curiosity.
Thank you for the question, Member Anderson. In response to your first question, we'll get the exact details, code citations, et cetera, but it is not legal for long-term habitation, I believe, in an RV, and those can be turned into code enforcement just through either the Inglewood app, the Service Finder on the website, or by calling code. But we will get you exactly what that is, because I don't want to quote that. And I have asked Christina Underhill to come up to give a status update on Little Dry Creek Plaza.
Yeah, Councilmember Anderson, we are working on three different projects down there. The interchange project, Phase 1 improvements that are in the channel, then Phase 2, which isn't encompassing the top of, which will be the unassigned fund balance funding. And so ultimately, we're working to get all the improvements done simultaneously as best as we can. Most likely, the top of Little Dry Creek will not come into play until next year. We'll start design this year so we can integrate everything with all three, four projects into each other. So next year, we'll start seeing some construction up there.
Very good. Thank you.
That is a project in coordination with Malheur Flood District. And so we have had a little bit of delay, both probably on staff and Malheur on that inlet design and installation. So, but we do anticipate early next year that we will start construction on that. But design is a rather lengthy process.
Very good. Thank you. That's all, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Member Anderson. Keep it simple, Member Russell. Keep my eyes from moving too far.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. And so I have a couple of questions. Apparently, there was a post on Next Door Today, somebody screenshot it to me about an abandoned vehicle that was left in, I believe, perhaps someone's driveway. And so I'd like to know what our policy is on that, because it's kind of like an illegal dump in your alley, maybe a little bit. But I think that also could be a dangerous problem for citizens. So I'd like to know what the policy is on that. So we do have a question. Since there was consensus at the last council meeting, why did the rescinding, the emergency order did not come forward this, this council meeting?
Yeah, I'll start off with the City Attorney Niles.
Councilmember Russell, we have that scheduled for the July 6th meeting, because there's, will be, the emergency ordinance and the emergency orders touch multiple areas of code, the policy manual. We anticipate it's going to be approximately five pieces of legislation. And we still feel like we're rushing the process fairly significantly. But the earliest we felt comfortable was bringing it forward July 6th to ensure that we didn't inadvertently insert a mistake into a piece of code or something of that sort. So we've been working on it since last Monday. So far, we've drafted an ordinance of repeal. We've drafted proposed revisions to the policy manual. We've drafted proposed revisions to the 2018 International Fire Code, which required an amendment document and an ordinance. In order to do that, we also consult with the Denver Fire Chief to make sure they don't have an issue with it. We've started that process. We're meeting with someone from the city clerk's office tomorrow to talk about to-go drinks and public consumption. So there's just a lot of different areas. It's more complicated than it appears at first glance. But we've, I've been working on it significant hours every day since last Monday, and we will continue to do so to make sure it gets on that July 6th agenda.
I do appreciate, appreciate all of that. But you know what? All of those things were against the law before COVID hit. And so now we're going to change the law. Is that kind of what we're looking at, I'm assuming? So I do appreciate it. So, thank you for that answer. I do have a board and commission update. It got so late last time, I didn't want to talk about this because really, it was really late. The ACE Committee has made a motion at the behest of the Chamber CEO to ban the ACE Committee. And has that already come forward? And is it on the agenda yet, Mayor Protem?
It's coming up, but it's mid-July. I'll take a look, but it is, it is scheduled to come in front of us.
Okay.
But it's only for discussion at this time. So just a study session item.
So it's just a study session item?
And I think that's on the 13th. I'll have to look.
So then we can decide, do we want to bring it forward or not? Okay. Well, I just wanted to give you all a heads up that that's coming forward. I was incredibly disappointed in the board, so, but that's my opinion. We'll discuss it at the meeting in July. So, anyway. Thank you. I think that's everything that I have tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Member Russell. Member Questa?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I just have one board update. And council met with the Historic Commission, I guess it was last month now, and gave some real good feedback. And City Attorney Niles was there at our most recent meeting. So they've taken that feedback, and we're working that into everything that was presented. Hopefully, we'll have some revisions soon, and we'll be back in front of council to get it to a point that we can move it to a vote, or have consensus to move it to a vote. Secondly, I'd like to echo Mayor Protem's thanks to the Inglewood PD, the board for the Bittner Fund, and all those folks that participated in the Bittner race this weekend. It's a really, really good reminder of, you know, just how much those folks take care of the city day in and day out, and really risk their lives every day. And it's overwhelmingly sad when I think about Officer Bittner and what happened to him and his family. And it's a tremendous sacrifice they made. And so credit to everybody who does that day in and day out. And I really thank all the folks who were there this weekend. Secondly, there was the volunteer appreciation event, and maybe that was a couple of weeks ago now at Pirate's Cove. And that was really fun, too. And staff put in a lot of work. And that was, I think, another thanks to all the folks who do things within the community. And you know, sometimes these just go totally unnoticed. And so I'm glad that those events take place to thank these people that really give contributions to the city, just out of the goodness of their heart and because they love the community. So thanks, everyone who did that. And that concludes. Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Member Questa. And Member Russell, I do see that it's on July 6th study session. And Member Ward?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Just one board and commission report sort of extends to what we heard tonight in public comment. I serve as liaison to the Parks and Rec Commission. And they are planning on reviewing the last task force meeting as a group, and coming up with recommendations to send to council. So with all the calls to, you know, end the discussion on dogs now, I just want to explain that there are a few steps left before it gets to council for an actual decision. But that committee has been dealing with this issue for quite some time now. They've put in a significant amount of work already. So I think it shouldn't take long for them to come up with some solid recommendations to council. And we might want to even consider bringing them in for a study session when we do go to discuss that issue.
Thank you, Member Ward. Do you want me to look to see if we can get that on the agenda coming up?
I'm not sure exactly what the plan is. We might want to check with the city manager and staff first, before we plan on bringing them in. But I think they would like the opportunity to address council on the matter.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Anything else, Member Ward? Looks like it. Moving on to the city manager's report.
Thank you. I know we're a little ahead of schedule, but it's still 9:30. But I am going to cover a few things that I've been putting off, because we've been later in the other meetings. First of all, just to close a couple of loops on previous questions, the Citizen of the Year is 6 o'clock at the Malle Center, honoring our Citizen of the Year, Nathan Hawag. And just a reminder, totally respect to the comments of Member Russell. And, but as a reminder, we were asked to change four policies and bring back the rescinding emergency order. So we are working on that. And I really want to give kudos to the city attorney, who's been coordinating that. And we're doing a lot of creative bending and moving and shaking, and have four departments involved in that effort. So we are working quickly on that. I also want to echo the thanks to Councilmember Anderson, who coordinated Be a Tool. It went really smoothly. And our Neighborhood Coordinator, Madeline Hinkfuss, and all the great work that went into that, as well as the Bittner run. And sorry that those were on the same day, so we couldn't all go to all of those. And then also wanted to just mention the American Rescue Plan. Thank you for that ratification. If those of you who have looked over the guidelines, such as the ones that Member Russell quoted with regard to how that can be spent, we are going to be having a study session on that. And we'll send out something to you all, just as this assistant to the city manager, Tim Dodd, wrote a report, kind of summarizing those regs, which are quite complicated. And so hopefully, that'll give you some guidance and thought, spur your thoughts on what we, you might want to see put in that. And then also mentioned, wanted to mention that we did meet with representatives from Tri-County Health today to determine how long to keep the vaccine clinic at Malle going. And so we are planning right now to keep that through the end of July. And so, but we'll make decisions at that time on whether or not to continue it through August as planned. But we have seen, you know, we're continuing to see drops in the number of people going in there. Another item is request from Senator Hickenlooper's office. As you may have heard in the news, Congress is looking at earmarks, returning earmarks to the congressional bill approval process. Those have been gone for a long time, but it looks like that they're coming back. So we got a rather last minute request from Senator Hickenlooper, his office. And I want to thank him because he was the only one of our delegation that asked us for ideas. But we have submitted four projects that are consistent with items in your strategic plan. Water for the design construction, construction management for lead service line replacement, as well as raw water supply improvements on wastewater, 1.5 million for construction, construction management services, and that's for work for the liquid stream construction, Phase 2, at South Platte Renew. And then in the stormwater, we have asked for 2.5 million to cover 80% of the design and construction costs for the water main on Old Hamden, replace and enlarge the storm sewer in that area. And all of those things will help offset the cost for S1, S2, S3, all of our stormwater projects. Any money that we put into any of those projects will, will help provide additional funding for any of those. And then on homelessness, as you know, we recently modified the strategic plan to include the work that our Tri-City Homelessness Policy Committee is working on. And so I've been talking to council about Bridge House, the Ready to Work Program. And so we did submit for some funding for that, which again, has the support of the three cities, somewhere in our three cities, to create a Ready to Work Program, which actually employs people experiencing homelessness and provides a dormitory style facility. This could also double as a navigation center. So we are working with our partners on those and other projects in the strategic plan. So just wanted to update you on those. At the time we got the request from Hickenlooper's office, we, we did not have another council meeting until we, the deadline to submit those. But they are all in accordance with your strategic plan goals. So, thank you, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, City Manager. And City Attorney's report?
Yes, as Councilmember Questa mentioned, I attended the Historic Preservation Commission meeting last week, and listened to their concerns and proposed modifications to some legislation. So I will be assisting them in bringing forward some modified legislation. In the, of course, this is my third week on the job. I've spent my time so far just scheduling meetings with council members and the mayor, department heads, and city staff, so that we can see how the city attorney's office can better serve the city and the city council in implementing your policies and improve legal services that we provide out of the city attorney's office. In addition, we're beginning the hiring process for the Assistant City Attorney position that's been vacant for quite some time. So we are finalizing a job description, and we will begin advertising for that, hopefully within the next several weeks. It's not something we want to rush into, because we want to make sure that we include different practice areas, that the city needs someone in-house. So we're looking at someone that has some expertise in employment law, in water law, those areas that we pay for outside legal counsel. I think it would be extremely helpful to have someone in-house that also has an expertise that can oversee those areas and, and hopefully redo some of those outside legal service bills. Other than that, we're working on quite a few issues that unfortunately, I can't discuss in a public meeting, because it is attorney-client privilege. But we are staying very busy in our office.
May I add on to her report?
Sure, City Manager Lewis.
I just want to let you know that today, we planned a meet and greet for our new city attorney that I want to invite all of you to. And that's going to be July 20, June 29th? That's Tuesday from 2:00 to 3:00 p.m. And we'll be in the atrium. I think it's the?
I think it's in the city attorney's office.
Oh, okay. So we would love for council members to come and join us for that, 2:00 to 3:00 on the 29th.
Thank you, City Manager Lewis. Anything else? Nothing left there? Nope. All right. So it is now 9:38. You guys have listened to my voice for hours now. Thank you very much for taking it easy for me, on me tonight. This meeting is now adjourned. Thank you, everyone.